Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council, uh, regular council meeting for January 31st, 2019, here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For those able, could you please rise and join us to the moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have item number three, our meeting minutes, Councilmember Adams.
I move to approve city council meeting items, items 3A1 and board and commission meetings, items 3B1 through 12.
Moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes for A and B. Next is reports and announcements. I have one announcement. For the Tempe City Charter, the city has made a, the appointments. The mayor has made the appointments this evening as part of our regular meeting agenda. This appointment is listed under item 5A1. Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
No announcements, thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public, uh, may remove a public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk and council members may remove any item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on a public hearing item, could you please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the council chambers, located in the back, and then hand it to our city clerk staff and then when it is your turn, I will call your name for public comments. Announcements for the consent agenda is miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A6. Awards and bids or contracts, items 5B1 through 5B13. Resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C2. Again, there's only two items that's on this, the consent agenda that are public hearing items, which is marked with an asterisk. Uh, would anyone in the public like to have any discussion on those items? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? I look to my council colleagues. Yes, Councilmember Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, item 5B6.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read with the exception of 5B6? It's been moved by Councilor Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next item on our agenda, second, is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for a introduction and first hearing will be heard tonight but will not be voted upon at this meeting.
Yes, could we get back to 5B6?
Thank you. Item 5B6, which is to approve, or 5B6, is to approve a one-year contract renewal with Artisan by Santa Barbara Catering, formerly known as Santa Barbara Catering Company, to provide catering services to the Center for the Arts. Councilmember Granville.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I don't know where our staff member is on this. I assume he's somewhere. Or maybe there isn't. Oh, there he is, he's coming up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, so first off, I, we've talked briefly about this, but I just wanted to reiterate, we've had this conversation, not you and I, but the conversation has been had as it relates to our court system, about who is the client. Uh, in the case of the court system and our public defenders, the person they're defending is the client, even though the city of Tempe is the payer. In this case, with the catering one, uh, in our renewal, it didn't really clearly show that the users had a way to provide feedback unless they were, you know, so upset that they sent an email to council or reached out or did something sort of, you know, uh, extra, e- extra effort. And you'd mentioned this in your response when I had the questions about looking at things from a 360-degree angle, and I, and I just really appreciate that and as you move forward with this and other contracts at TCA for vendors, if there's a slot or somewhere in there that we could see, uh, like a scoring system or responses to a feedback card or whatever from people who use those vendors, because they might be sweet as pie to us as a city, but just horrible to work with as a, you know, person who hired them.
Absolutely.
And that's the kind of feedback that is at least as helpful to me as whether or not if they return our phone calls on time, as if they return someone else's phone calls on time.
Yeah, I work with staff and we'll get, uh, any, you know, customer feedback next time the contracts come up.
I appreciate that. And I know that we're in a many-year cycle on this, so this might not see the light of day for two or three or four years, but if you can just start to, you know, keep it in the back of your mind for as it comes up as an opportunity.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Keating.
I actually have a question for you, please, sir. Um, is this the, is this the vendor who you use for the bartending services at TCA?
Um, uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Keating. Uh, this is one of many. Um, originally, this vendor dropped off the list, uh, when we renewed the contract for TCA, um, but then made a decision to switch back and wanted to get added back on. So this is not just a single vendor for TCA, it's just one of many, and just tonight it's being, um, brought back forward to you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion on item 5B6? It's been moved by Councilman Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating, or Councilmember Granville, please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but items will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. The only section on this, item on this, under this section is item 6A1, is to award a construction manager at risk, uh, contract to the Hayden Building Corporation for the Warner Road Transmission Main from Rural Road to McClintock Drive to Well 16 and the waterline projects for the University Heights Neighborhood bounded by the Apache Boulevard North to University Drive and Dorsey Lane East to the McClintock Drive and the Hudson Manor Neighborhood bound by East Cedar Street, north of Apache Boulevard and South Cedar Street, east to McClintock Drive. Are there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A1? Is there a, or a motion? It's been moved by Councilmember Granville, seconded by Vice Mayor Kubi. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next item and the next section is our non-consent agenda, is ordinance and items for the introduction and first hearing. Uh, this item will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for this item is scheduled for, for February 28th, 2019. Ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing, item 6B1, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 2 of the Tempe City Code relating to the administration and a city code generally dissolving the public works department, establishing the engineering and transportation department and a municipal utilities department, and moving the parks maintenance section from the field operations divisions to the community services department, to be combined with recreation and form a new community service division called Parks and Recreation, uh, Division. This ordinance amends the city code generally to reflect that all public works departments will be known as either the engineering and transportation department or the municipal utilities department, and the public works director will be known as either the engineering and transportation director or the municipal utilities director. The second and final public hearing is set for February 28th, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? Any comments from the councils on this item? Seeing none? Moved to the last section of our non-consent agenda is ordinance and items for a second hearing and final adoption. There are no items listed on this section this evening. Um, with that, I look to my council colleagues for current events and announcements. Start with, uh, Councilmember Adams.
No announcements.
Councilmember Granville.
Just one announcement, Mayor, and there's a slide that goes with it. So, uh, about a year ago, we started talking about a, a tree rebate program, uh, which has now been aptly named the Tree Bait Program. Uh, it is well underway, and so for those, SRP does a similar program as well. Uh, and so if you're looking to plant a desert-friendly tree in Tempe, the rebate, uh, you go, you take a little quick class, you learn how to take care of it so you don't kill the tree, and I believe the rebate's up to $75. Um, and that way you can, uh, you know, add a little shade to the city.
Okay? Vice Mayor Kubi.
Yes, miss, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the, uh, over 50 volunteers that we have throughout the community, uh, that helped with our pit count, that's the homeless point-in-time count, which took place on January 22nd. And I want to thank Mark Vanik Dancing Chef Catering for providing the food for our volunteers at 5:30 in the morning, and we spanned across the city in teams. We worked on, with a new app that will actually crowd, crowdsource information immediately onto an app so we can get the extent of our homelessness, um, problem in real time, and we also were able to ask additional questions we didn't ask last year about pets, for example, because that can be an impediment to finding housing. So it was a really successful event, and I'm looking forward to having the presentation to council in a month or so. Thank you.
Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I hope everyone can join us this Saturday for a very important, we have our first opioid town hall meeting, and the opioid addiction is a national crisis that affects us all. We're tracking the addiction with our services, compassion, and research, um, partnering with ASU. Join us this Saturday from 10:00 to noon at the Tempe History Museum and learn more about our ground, our groundbreaking research, hear about the, our opioid dashboard that provides real-time data on suspected overdose, find out how simple, simple waterways can help us deploy and prevent, and prevent and use resources for the most needed, uh, get a lot of information into a safe space. We have our counselors, we're gonna have a lot of resources there at, uh, this fair that coming this Saturday, good representation. Uh, you'll also be hearing from moderators from FIRE, ASU, and wastewater analytics program. Uh, this is one of the first, uh, programs we're doing, hopefully of many. We really want to get the word out there, we really want to have the resources readily available for the people that are ready for the opioid addiction, if they are, if they are suspected or have a family member. We hope to see you Saturday. I don't know if there's gonna be a video. Okay, no video, but I appreciate you all if you can make it. Thank you.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to update everybody. Uh, this weekend, if you're not gonna go to the opioid event, please come to the College Connect event. If you're a student and thinking about CTE, which is career technical education and career readiness, just understanding what maybe your careers could be in the future, um, please come, it will be, it'll be for you, Saturday, February 2nd, 9:45 to noon at the Tempe Public Lyre Berry downstairs. Uh, hopefully you can make it, and, um, on behalf of myself and Vice Mayor Kubi and Councilmember Keating, uh, we have been on our working group, really working to look at what we're doing with adaptive parks and recreation and how we can make improvements. So we are having a public meeting on Monday, February 4th, at 5:30 in the library downstairs. We would love for you to come, we want your input, we want your feedback. It's really important to make sure that we get it right as we work to make recommendations to expand our program. Thank you.
Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly thank everybody who's provided feedback and who came to our Broadway revitalization, uh, public meeting. There's a lot of really good feedback from the community, I think there's a lot of people excited about the, the program and the effort, so, um, I was very pleased with that, as I know my colleagues, uh, Mayor Mitchell and-
We just wanna, like, how can y'all have a meeting without talking first about Antonio?
Ma'am, ma'am.
Hudson! How dare you! Have a meeting! We can sit until the 14-year-old boy!
Alright, if you guys give me a second, I can explain something. If you, if you give me a second, I can explain something. What's, what's gonna happen? Give me a second, I can explain something. You're gonna have a chance, you're gonna have a chance to speak. If you give me a second, if you give me a second, if you give me one second, wait. If you-
When do we want it? When do we want it?
You don't have a chance.
When do we want it? When do we want it? Hudson! When do we want it? When do we want it?
I got, you guys will all have a chance to speak. Ask you guys a question? Can I ask you a question? If you guys give me, if you guys give me a chance to explain something, if you give me something, if you give me a chance to say something, if you give me a chance to say something, I, if you give me a chance to say something, if you give me a chance to say something, you guys will have a chance to speak. I will, we have a program in place, I'll let you guys speak, I have cards, you're gonna have a speak, we, we have your cards, so we are going to do that right now, if you look at the agenda.
It is disrespectful! It is disrespectful!
I'm letting you speak, if you give us a chance, but you're interrupting the chance for you guys to speak.
Kill the 14-year-old boy! Kill the 14-year-old boy! And there's, show up there!
I'm giving you a chance to speak, you let us speak. You guys will have your chance to speak.
What is it? What were you thinking about freaking trees?
Alright, we have a project in place right now. According to, according to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the council may discuss matters listed on this agenda, matters discussed by the public hearing cannot be discussed-
You obviously do not care about due process! You murdered a 14-year-old child! You do not care about process!
I have a first, I have, I have a first card. Verdana Hernandez, you have up to three minutes to speak. Is Verdana Hernandez in the audience? Verdiana Hernandez, you can come speak, I have your card, you have three minutes, you can come speak right now, please state your name and place of residence for the record, and you have up to three minutes to speak to us. Her name is Verdiana Hernandez? Is that you? I'm asking, well, can you all sit down, please, so we can have you speak? You guys can all speak. You all can have a chance to speak. You all can have a chance to speak.
We want to hear you speak!
We want to hear you speak. We want to hear you speak. We want, well, we have a-
That's your priority trees over the life of a 14-year-old-
Wait, we have a, we have a protocol on the agenda, the public appearances is after the agenda, it's on, it's on the agenda. And here's what we have, and here's what we have, you have a chance to speak, we want to hear from you. We want to hear from you. So, Verdana Hernandez, you have three minutes if you'd like to speak. Hernandez, alright, next speaker, next speaker then. Maria Castro. Maria Castro, I have cards. Maria Castro.
This is G. S. M. Jackson! Mike Jackson! Alright, media's gonna speak.
Verdana, I asked Verdana Hernandez, if she wants to speak, she can come forward and speak. Well, can you all sit down so we can do this? And you guys can speak, that's what I've been trying to tell you about.
No, this is, this is, we're our city!
Can you all sit down? You guys can speak, but-
We want to hear everybody!
We want to hear everybody speak. That's why we have this, we have this process for you guys to speak, we want you to hear you, we want to hear you, but you're not allowing us to hear you. So, can, well, can you sit down, sir? If you can sit down, we can, we can go forward with all the cards that we have, and everyone has a chance to speak. So, Verdana Hernandez.
Yeah, Verdana, Verdiana.
Is she here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Where is she? That's her. Okay, please state your name and place of residence for the record, and you can have up to three minutes. If you, if you sit down, everybody will get a chance to speak. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, Ms., Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you. Sorry, we're extremely angry, and it's extremely angry that you all show up to this meeting and that you talk about everything else except Antonio, that's not even an item that y'all are addressing, that you have gone over two weeks now and not have said anything about a 14-year-old boy. He was, he just turned 14, he turned 14 in November, a 13-year-old boy that was shot and killed in your city by your department. And then you show up to this meeting and you're asking us to calm down when you blatantly just disregard and ignore that this has happened. There's a family that is destroyed, there's a community that is destroyed, the county overall has shot six teenagers in the last month, less than a month, and this is a crisis that is happening. You disrespected the family yesterday by allowing media to watch the body of their son laying on the ground before you even called them, to give them the, do the mere respect to see the video first. You allowed media, you invited media to go in and watch this video, to watch the little boy be killed and die for the seven minutes that you all didn't do anything, handcuffed him, and let him die. And you didn't even respect the family enough to let them know that you, they can watch the video. We want, demand that this officer is fired immediately, we demand that this police chief is fired. This is a culture of violence that has continued from Phoenix throughout the Maricopa, through Maricopa County in the last year, and there's blood on your hands, there's blood on your hands, Antonio's blood is on your hands, and I know you have children, you let a little boy die, you killed a little boy. Your protocols, the, the, this idea that we have to protect our men in blue, the officers that this city, that the constituents here pay for, and that you'd rather protect them than to let the truth be known. This isn't the first case, you have many other cases, and I, we know this is not gonna be the last one because you haven't even addressed him, you haven't even named him, you've instead been talking about him.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
You've instead tried to say things about him.
We want everyone else to speak.
You've instead called the media to tell them your story.
Ma'am, I, I, thank you for your, your comments, and-
Let her speak, man!
Do you want her to speak for all of you?
And we demand justice, and we demand to know what are you going to do? What are you going to do?
We have three minutes per speaker, that's, that's-
And we want to know what you're going to do!
Mr. Mayor, this is our meeting now, let her speak. I'm giving you a few words, man! You want your rights.
May you please state your name and place of residence for the record?
My name's Maria, you have my card next.
Thank you.
My name's Maria Castro, uh, I'm an organizer with Puente Human Rights Movement. I've been with Antonio's family since Wednesday after you murdered him. The police has murdered my brother-in-law, they murdered my neighbor, and now Antonio. It's just a matter of time before it hits home for you two. You don't give a [BLEEP] about protocol, so stop [BLEEP] pretending in this meeting, because if you did, I don't care, I don't care! If you gave [BLEEP] about [BLEEP] protocol, you would have fired this officer for not following it. You would have fired this chief right here for lying!
Chief, fire him now!
You, if you gave [BLEEP] about all that, due process policies, you don't give a [BLEEP]. How dare you? Is my son next? Is my little boy next? Is my sister next? She lives right here at Tucker House. I don't [BLEEP] trust you with the life of my sister. I was gonna bring my baby today, but I was like, no, Tempe Police is gonna be there. How dare you? How can you go home? You need to fire this guy. You need to fire this lady right here. You need to stop everything that you are doing and start figuring out how you are going to implement policies to fire all of the abusive assholes who you call cops from licensing them to abuse people in this, in this town. How are you gonna fire all of them before they murder another person? This is not a war zone, but you make it feel that way. It is completely unacceptable. I kept flipping through the agenda, and I was like, I must have missed it, I must have missed it. Of course they're gonna talk about Antonio, these are progressive people. Progress is not killing children. So, until you fire him, you will continue to see our faces until there is policy change so that you fire all of these abusive officers, until there is policy change so that these videos are sensitive with the family first, because obviously body cam footage does not stop murders, right? So until you fix this, you will continue to see our faces, you will continue to feel that awful gut feeling that you feel right now, because this is not over, we will not go away, and we will continue to let you know that we will be here every single day until there is justice for Antonio. Nothing will bring him back.
Thank you, Ms. Castro.
But, I don't care what you have to say. Nothing will bring him back.
Well, we have another speaker for everyone's time.
But you need to fire that officer, and if there is no commitment from you by the end of tonight, we're gonna be here every single meeting until you do.
Thank you.
What do we want? No! 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 No![1696.42] This family moved from Mexico because they were afraid of the violence, to get away from the violence. And he brought him to, they brought him to Tempe. And our community is not that community that I would expect this to happen. I was shocked when I saw this happen. And it cannot, the, the police department has got to retrain their officers. They've got to fire this man or he needs to go to jail because he committed a murder. He committed murder. Okay? The school let him down. They didn't listen to him. His parents don't speak the best English, I guess, and they didn't understand what was going on. He gets kicked out of school and he shouldn't have. So the parents, the teachers came to his rescue and the, and the board, the, the teacher's board told these teachers they could not speak to the family, they could not protest this death, the death of their student. They weren't allowed to protest, they weren't allowed to come here. They were told that they have no business being in front of the council. But the teachers wanted to speed up, speak up for this boy because he was a good boy. He went and bought tortillas, he went to work for his grandfather to buy tortillas for his mother who didn't, couldn't afford tortillas.
Thank you, Ms. Spot, your time is up. The next is Garrett Jeffs. Everyone has time. If you want everybody to speak.
Okay, I just have one more thing to say. We all live in Tempe. I, I know your dad, I knew your dad Harry. I've known, you, I know some of you council people, I voted for a lot of you. I really think that this has to be nipped in the butt. I don't know what you guys have to do to, if he has to serve time for committing his murder, whatever he has to do, whatever you have to do to get justice for Antonio, it has to be done now or this city is going to erupt.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Garrett Jeffs. And then on deck after Garrett is Nate Briggs. Which one, are you Garrett? Garrett? Do you want to speak? And then after, after Garrett is Nate. If Nate, you could, you don't want, after Nate, we have Fallon L. That's all I have, I don't know. Okay. So you know, next.
My name is Garrett, I live in Tempe. Um, and I just want to let you all know, I'm sure that you're already aware of it, but Jennifer Adams, there's blood on your hands. Colby Greenville, there's blood on your hands. Lauren Cooby, blood on your hands. Mark Mitchell, blood on your hands. Joel Navarro, complicit. Robin Arondo Savage, complicit. And then you, you're complicit too. You Sylvia are just as complicit, you are especially complicit. You need to resign. You need to be put in jail just as much as the police officer who killed that child does too. So that's all I have to say. I hope you guys all look up Sylvia Moore online and remember her name because she's just, she's the most responsible out of anybody in this room.
Nate Briggs. Fallon L. And after Fallon, we have Sebastian Messina.
Hi, uh, my name is Fallon. Uh, I am a resident of Tempe. I am a former resident of the city of Phoenix. Um, I was born and raised on 16th Street and Baseline, uh, mere blocks from where the shooting occurred. And I would like to say that every single one of you are the villains in this story. You especially. You are the villains. We are the heroes and we will win. Anybody that does not stand with us is a villain and anyone that does not stand with us will be, will face retribution here, okay? This is unacceptable. This death will not stand. The countless deaths that have occurred in this city will not stand. I don't know how to teach you people empathy because you will not learn it. You have been sitting here listening to these people with no visible reaction on your faces, except for you Lauren Cooby, but I don't know how to, I mean, you can make that facial expression, but apparently you can't do anything about it.
Can I just explain?
I am not finished. You can appear to have a face of pain on your masks or whatever you would like to call it. I do not think that you are capable of feeling love for your city. You claim to have been on our sides for as long as your terms have lasted, but nothing has changed. People keep dying, children keep dying, all of them my brother's ages. They, it is unacceptable that you can claim to be on any of our sides and keep doing what you're doing, which is nothing. And you can keep making excuses for the press, making excuses about how everybody here is not really making, or is not, how everybody here is making too big of a deal out of nothing, how he deserved it. You deserve all sorts of retribution, you deserve no mercy. And you deserve no mercy either. I, I don't want to sit here and say that we should vote you out of office because it doesn't matter if we vote someone new into office, they're going to be doing the same thing. We don't need new council members, we need you guys gone. And we need a new system in place and nothing will ever be okay until that happens. It is unacceptable. Words cannot express how angry I am. When I was here, or when I was at the municipal court for the vigil and Antonio's family stood there, I heard a woman cry like I've never heard anybody cry before. And all of you should have been there and it is unacceptable that you were not. We had to sit there and listen to police officers laugh at us, laugh from freaking buildings while a mother cried, sobbed because her child was dead. Over and over again, she kept screaming in Spanish, only 14, why God? Why my baby? What the hell is wrong with you? I really don't know what's wrong with you. I don't think anything will ever fix you and I think that that's [BLEEP] horrible. I don't even know if you guys are human, you can't even feel anything for a baby.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sebastian Messinas. And then following Sebastian is Nalali Morales, Ms. Morales?
Yeah, anyway. Sebastian, for, uh, live in Tempe, I agree, uh, there's blood on your hands and your hands and all of you. I cannot articulate how pissed off we really are at you, how this happens. Your cops are overtrained, overfunded and then deployed like it's a war zone. Our communities are not war zones. You don't get to strap an AR-15 to a motorcycle and ride on it and then just kill us. And then pretend like it's our fault because, you know, we break some little ordinance and your made-up little procedures that you give such a big [BLEEP] about. I think that Officer Hyin and whoever that is deserves to be in jail beyond fire. This is an unconscionable act that the people will not stand for. And we will be here every day until we get what we need, which is justice. Justicia! And I agree again that, uh, this doesn't work, it doesn't matter, uh, what faces, what bags of flesh are plopped into the chairs. There are severe and profound structural problems in this town that replacing y'all won't do. So beyond replacing y'all, we're gonna replace this. This is not, this cannot stand. The answer to, the, the answer to this is not sensitivity training. It is changing the material conditions that set people up to get killed. Because that's what you want, that's who you engineered this for. And honestly, that's what this is all about. You, you make people poor on purpose so that you can set them up to fail and then blame them like it's some kind of great moral failing. But in reality, I think all the villains are right before us, right? You know? It's, it's, uh, one thing to talk about, you know, the economics, the structural problems, we talk about it and then you say, oh, we're gonna talk about the opioid crisis and everything. When in the end, it is really also a moral problem that you just killed a 14-year-old and you don't give a [BLEEP]. You know? Yeah. In the scapula. And then, and then you said it was a man and then you said, oh, he had a gun, then he turned around and then, you know? Y'all are just... Y'all are all gonna be in the dustbin of history one day.
Thank you. Next is Darian Barrett. And then Natalie Morales, are you here? Come forward. After, after, uh, Darian.
My name is Darian Barrett, I'm from Tempe. I'm an organizer of Tempe Against Police Violence. I've been in the community for three years. I have seen Sylvia Moyer in the spotlight of Tempe twice in a matter of three years. She already knows the name I'm gonna say, Dalvin Hollins. You can't even... I want you to look at me Sylvia. You couldn't even meet with the mother of Sarah Coleman for 15 minutes because your ego is too big. Tempe Police Body Cam Policy is to be released in 48 hours. Lieutenant Edward Omet did not have his body camera on, yet alone was he on duty? No. Who was Officer B? The unknown officer that first made engaged contact with Dalvin Hollins the day of July 27, 2016? Because it was up to that officer, it was up to that officer on whether Dalvin Hollins would be alive or not. And, but no, we had Lieutenant Edward Omet, who is not sane to be on the police force at all, respond to a call of a child, 19-years-old, five-years older than Antonio Arce. I saw Lieutenant Mike Pooley blame the gun on the death of Dalvin Hollins. Who are we blaming this time, Ms. Sylvia? I'm blaming you. I'm blaming the man next to you. I'm blaming Mark Mitchell. Because it is up to you guys on who you hired and who you put on the streets every day to protect and serve us. I have not seen no protecting and serving. I have seen bullets in the back and officers abused their power. I come out here every weekend and I put cameras on your officers. I have seen your officers act out in ways that I have never expected. I wanted to be one of your officers when I was younger. Now I don't even want to look at your officers. I don't even want to call for help from your officers because there's a risk that my neighbor or I end up with a bullet in the back. I went to the scene of Antonio Arce, I walked down that alley. I looked at the wall that that second bullet hit, a two-centimeter bullet hole inside of a concrete block. Imagine what that is going in through someone's skin? That, it's not correct. These are bullets that are made to explode on impact. And we have all our officers strapped with these bullets. I've been in the community of Tempe, Phoenix, Mesa and Scottsdale. Tempe PD is by far the most racist department that I have seen yet.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
And you shake your head.
Next speaker. We are, everyone has three minutes.
Sylvia lawyer shakes her head in disbelief, but it's her officers that she puts out on the streets. You need to figure out what you're doing at the end of the night because it's our officers that swear to protect and serve that are shooting and killing our young ones. Someone that could take your seat. Someone that could take your seat. You just shot and killed. I bet that don't feel right. Let that settle.
Ms. Morales. And then after Ms. Morales, after Ms. Morales, we have Joshua Coben, if you want to head your way down here. Thank you. Ms. Morales?
As a teacher, mother and member of Tempe, I demand justice for Antonio and his family. What happened is absolutely disgusting. I cannot go home and look at my children in the eye knowing that the police department kills them. And that this lady will go on camera and justify that murder by saying we are criminals. After the killer cop murdered Antonio, his partner told him, "Good job. You did a good job." You hear that on camera? How is that possible? Is that what we expect from the people that are supposed to protect us? To murder our children? I do not want to go back to my students and explain how they're not gonna be next. I cannot assure them that, not even to my own children. This is absolutely disgraceful. And time after time, the police will come and blame us, blame their citizens for not being able to protect us because we are at fault, because we did something wrong. And then all of the races will come and join them saying, yes, because he did this and he did that, he deserves to die. No, he didn't deserve to die. Our children do not deserve to die. We are here to demand justice for his family because even though I do not know them, I feel like it was my own child that they murdered. I see myself in Antonio. And when they come and justify his murder, it is my child that I feel they kill and they're trying to justify their murder. That killer cop needs to be in jail and that lady needs to be fired. And all of you need to do your jobs. Because when you guys came and asked for my vote, I gave them to you. So I expect you guys to protect our community and actually do what you're saying. Because I don't want my children to believe that cops are good people. When they come and try to hand them out stickers, I do not let them take them. Because they will give them stickers today, but they will give them a bullet tomorrow. That is not acceptable.
Thank you. Joshua Corbin. And then following Joshua is Franklin Oliveri. Did I say that correctly? Franklin, you're on deck. Following Franklin is Phil Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate your patience through this. And, uh, I just wanted to say, um, I do, uh, I'm the director, uh, my name is Joshua Coben, I'm the Tempe, Arizona, sorry for the record here. Um, and I'm the director of Arizona Foundation to Serve Victims of Police Abuse. Uh, my organization is not inherently anti-police. I would thank all honorable police officers for their service. I, I hope they continue continuing in protecting and service. They do exist, guys, come on. All right. Agree, disagree? The shooting in question is disgusting, okay? If I saw someone get in my car, take something out of it and then watch them run down the street and I shot them in the back, do you know where I would be? I would be at the bottom of a jail cell and I would never see daylight for the rest of my effing life, okay? Why is this cop not in [BLEEP] jail? That's what I want to know, Sheriff, whatever your title is. Why is he not in jail? Administrative leave? What is that? What, what, what is that? That is ridiculous. Yeah, no. I would, any other citizen would be in jail, but no, they have a badge on. Huh? That protects you. That does not, just because you get to wear a uniform, you do not get to shoot children in the back, okay? That does not happen. Also, the way the investigation was conducted is just a clear abuse of power. They, they searched without a warrant the neighbor's house after the shooting. The, her police officers, Officer Jane, and them, our Fourth Amendment, an oath requiring a warrant by a judge to be searched any property. That was not happening. They confiscated an iPad of a lady who was on scene. It came back and it didn't work anymore. Does that, what does that sound like to everybody in here? A cover-up? Yeah, come on. This is a culture. Here in Arizona, other states have taken notice. In 2016, we had the fourth-most people killed out of any state in the country. The Washington, the New York Times wrote an article about how bad police killings are here. The New York Times in New York where they just, you know, it's, there have been more killings, there have been 82 killings this year by police in 2018, double that of 2017. And yet you sit here and you're having a meeting about trees, you know? So when's the meeting about when we kill people, okay? That's what I want to know, huh? When's the meeting about when we stop killing people? All right? Carrying a gun is a privilege, it's a necessity for a dangerous job. It is not something that we should all, that everybody gets to do. Yes, I know police work is dangerous and they put their lives on the line, but they also, they also, they also need to exercise that privilege correctly and not shoot people who are running away. Who gets shot in the back when running away from a crime scene? That shouldn't even be saved for people we already know are guilty even. So why are we shooting 14-year-old children and why do we think that's acceptable? That's what I would like to know. Uh, I would ask the city council to use your powers under Section 209 of the city charter to authorize the city manager to investigate the murder. And I want her fired, I want that officer fired, I want, I want that officer in jail. I want her investigated for instruction of justice. If the city manager is complicit and won't do it, I want that person fired. Are they here tonight? I don't even know who it is. So is, if that's not what it's gonna take, the last suggestion I would have for you, make, and this is something that I've come up with either on my own or just speaking with friends, police officers, I feel, get too jaded too quickly after they start their jobs, especially beat officers. We should institute term limits, just like you guys. If you're a cop and you've been on the force for five years, it's time to go. It's time to find another job, okay? Time to retire unless you can move up to detective.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next is Franklin Oliveri. After Franklin, we have Phil Martinez. If Phil, you can make your way down, that'd be great.
Good evening, ma'am, I'm gonna give up my time for her to speak.
Okay. Franklin, that's you? Okay.
Yeah, he's seating his time.
Hello, uh, city council members. It, um, it hurts me how the family has been treated.
Can you state your name for us?
My name's Manuel Saldana, I, I do reside in Phoenix, but I, I've worked in your city for three years. I was, uh, I worked at Tumbleweeds at a shelter for homeless youth and I saw how us as a community is always not giving the right resources to the youth that we... And I saw how us as a community is always not giving the right resources to the youth that we have. Not just in our streets, but like in our schools too. Just how they were mentioning how that youth was not being treated well by his teachers. We need different types of tactics in schools. And we need to keep cops out of schools also. The, it was a systematic way that he was murdered by federal laws. His parents being taken away, all the trauma that this boy was facing was all of us here. And to speak about the police officer, it hurt me because I'm also a two-time Afghan veteran. And it didn't surprise me that he, that he did this. We all joined trying to help. Y'all joined trying to help the city. But there's cultural, cultural, cultural things that we have that are in place that we need to change. I've pointed weapons at children overseas. And why is that okay? Because I was a soldier. Why can't they do that? Because they're police officers? Nobody should be able to do that. And we're all failing them. And we all have blood on our hands by doing that kind of stuff. There's times where I couldn't look at myself in the mirror because of the stuff that I've done. And I hope that y'all really see that you're part of this, that you are sitting next to each of these cops, each of these people. And instead of having a force maybe with weapons, having social services, having somebody out there, not every 911, not every 911 call needs a police officer. And there's people willing to do this without a gun. When I was working at that shelter, I stopped youths from going into the street trying to commit suicide. People that had pills trying to take. One kid that we couldn't find housing for, and he couldn't find a job, tried to do suicide back police. What other place has that? Or why would we even push youths to do that? I really hope that you listen to the hearts of these people and you look past that and you do leave that ego aside. Because this is a passion that they have that's real. And they're worried about their families. And I hope that you see that and you take that and you see that that's what you need to do to wake up and just start doing something else and finding money to do something else. And please, treat that family with more respect and listen to them. And listen to everybody here. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Are you Phil?
Yeah.
Okay. And after Phil, we have Stephen Levine?
Yeah, Phil can take my time too.
Okay.
All right. So my name is Phil Martinez and I'm a resident of Glendale, Arizona. Four years ago, on the 4th of February, my cousin was killed by the Tempe Police Department and Mesa Police Department as well. I actually got to accompany my aunt to the morgue as she scrubbed his body clean and cried. Now, my cousin was wanted. He had a probation violation. The person driving him to work, though, wasn't wanted. And it was his boss. His boss's mugshot from 10 years ago was the first thing that was planted all over the news. And it was two convicted felons murdered or shot by the police department today. You know, the perception, you know, these numbers are rising. And it's sad because I hear the veterans speaking. And I thank you for your service. I also have a brother who's a veteran. And you know, he asked me this question too. He's like, "What's the difference between the rules of engagement with police and the rules of engagement overseas?" I didn't know. He goes, "There's none. There's no rules of engagement for a police. They can fire, but our enemies, they have to show a weapon and then shoot at our troops before they're fired upon." Why do our citizens not get the same rights? Why is that? Is it really because of safety? Because we walk the same streets, Mayor. I've been robbed, I've been shot, and I'm still alive. And I've never once killed a single person. Not once. I've been to prison. And I'll tell you what, I think my daughter is safer in prison than walking the streets in Tempe. Because of her color. Because of the way the police ask questions and the way they interact with the public. It's not in their best interest, they're there to find a crime and prosecute. So I tell my daughter to keep her mouth shut and not to talk to the police. And it scares me because I know what that can do. But I also know that she can also end up in jail. My question to you guys is, when are you guys going to start holding them accountable and start making sure that training is done? I know it's not the best thing for you politicians to do and come against the police and say, "Hey, we need better training." Because you know what? Then your opponent's going to run against you and say they're against the police. But we need someone to stand up and actually protect the citizens. And not sit back and worry about what your opponent's going to say at the podium. Because at the end of the day, this number four years ago, when we were doing the same thing in here for my cousin, was smaller. The numbers are rising and all these people want to do is keep it from hitting your guys' homes. Because the pain that we feel, the pain that I feel when I think of my cousin no longer going home at night is real. And we want it to stop so it doesn't hit your guys' homes. That's all these people want. They don't want, they want the police to stop killing people and the numbers to go down and not keep rising. That's it. Stop the training. We need people to stand up, be accountable, and not be afraid of what their opponent's going to say. We deserve it.
Thank you. Christopher, is it Cohen or Cochran? Christopher Cochran, and then Dallas Winston, you're on deck. And then... It's on. Mr. Cohen Cochran? And then Dallas Winston? Mr. Cochran, go ahead.
I represent the Party for Socialism Liberation. I also am a health coworker here in Tempe. I like to say, if I, if one of my patients dies, I will lose my license. I will lose my job. I will lose my income. Why do we not hold the police the same standard? Why are our police being the judge, jury, and executioner? I take it that, you know, innocent until proven guilty does not apply anymore? Is this what it has come down to? So we have people who are running away for crimes like apprehended, scared children. You know, they don't know. When I was 14, I was a freshman in high school. I didn't know damn well between right and wrong a lot of times. I didn't even really have a good sense of like what it meant to be a good citizen. Did I, like, at that age, no one deserves, you know, the worst of treatment. There's nothing worse than death. You can't come back from that. These children, they don't deserve this. I want to know, does any of you have any plans in the future to, I mean, reducing police violence? As far as de-escalation procedures? Because I haven't seen any. There's, you know, you guys train all these things, but there's nothing for de-escalation? You know, so many times, Mesa Police, Phoenix Police, Tempe Police, the first things they do, they reach for a gun. There's no taser, no pepper spray, not even alternatives. It's straight to killing. You don't even know if they have a gun. Why even break out the gun in the first place? It's escalation of violence. But the biggest thing I've noticed is that everything the police do in Tempe that's good can be done by other people. Everything that the police do bad in Tempe is only done by the police.
Thank you. Dallas, Dallas Winston. And then after Dallas is Christina Green. And after Christina Green is Alexis Isias Islayas.
My name's Dallas. I live in Tempe. I just moved here about a month ago. This is the third time I've come up to do this. I just moved from Topeka, Kansas, and this exact same situation happened twice in the last year. And the first time it was someone I knew personally, so I came out to talk about it. Dominique White, Topeka, Kansas. You can go look it up. They shot him while he was crawling to his truck after they'd already shot him. I get frustrated when I come to these things because I look at you guys up here and over here, and I know that you have to listen to us, so you're doing it, but you're not hearing it. And you're not going to go home and think about any of it. You're not going to, you're not going to take any action. You are getting paid to fix this problem. And there's 50 people here who have other jobs who have to come here and figure this out for you. And that's frustrating to me. So if you, if you, if you want some solutions on how to stop this from happening again, I'm happy to help you again. Do your job. First of all, if people can't stop shooting other people and murdering them, the first thing you do is you take away the guns. I'm not talking about these people. I'm talking about right there, these police. The men and women in blue are the bravest. They can do their job without a gun then, huh? Your men and women are real brave. Give them some pepper spray. They can handle it. They're real brave. And if that doesn't work, I have another solution for you. Because I grew up in a small town and we had two, we had a sheriff and we had a deputy. And this didn't happen. And you know why? Because that sheriff and that deputy, they went to school with my parents. And we knew where they lived and we knew their addresses. So this wasn't a problem. So if I can make this clear, as clear as possible for you, these people are going to do your job if you don't. So if you don't start taking guns away from these people, you don't start giving us their information so we can hold them accountable, someone else is going to do it for you and it's not going to fucking look pretty.
Christina Green. And after Christina Green, Alexia, Alexa?
Hello, my name's Christina Green. I'm from Phoenix, Arizona. I'm with the Party of Socialism and Liberation. And justice isn't just firing the guy, it's putting him in prison. That's justice. You put him in prison. And even if he goes to prison, he's still alive. He could change his life. He could turn his life around. But that 14-year-old boy who was murdered by that cowardly cop, he cannot come back to life. He is done because he's dead. Because a cop killed him. That cop killed him. And that cop could turn around, but that kid can't because he's dead. He can't go, you know, graduate out of high school. His parents can't hug him anymore. He can't do anything because he's dead. You can't change if you're dead. It doesn't matter whether he was a criminal or whether he was working class or whether he was brown or whatever he did. He cannot change his life because now he is dead because their cops killed that child. Die! No justice, no peace!
No peace! No justice, no peace!
Alexa?
No justice, no peace!
Alexa?
No justice, no peace!
And then after Alexa, we have Jasmine Lester. And then after Jasmine is Sarah Tacola?
It's Alexia Isias. So my name is Alexia Isias. I've lived in Phoenix, Arizona my entire life. And I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I speak before you today to express many emotions. Grievance, helplessness, but above all, rage. A few days ago, a 14-year-old by the name of Antonio Arce was brutally murdered by the racist Tempe police. He was running for his life as any sane person would do when they are young, when they have grown up around one of the most deadliest police forces in the country. He was shot in the back. And as soon as he fell to the ground and became unconscious, the police for absolutely no reason tased him. I don't know what Tempe City Council feels, and that is the truth. Some of you think that police judgment is perfect and never flawed. Some of you think another Hispanic kid off the streets is a good thing for the community. I know I can never change your minds, no matter what new witnesses come up suggesting Antonio didn't even have an airsoft gun in his possession. No matter how much evidence we have, you've already have your minds made up. The truth is, the community doesn't want to hear your condolences. And nobody wants to hear how sorry you are. Nobody wants your pity. Nobody wants your sympathy. We all know how it goes by now. Somebody gets shot by police. The officer responsible for murder is placed on paid leave. The families grieve and hold vigils. And as soon after the victim of legalized murder is put into a statistic for the year, people learn to accept it and move on. But how about us? Not us. Our community and our groups, activists and revolutionaries, people of all different backgrounds are beginning to unite. We understand that unity is the only way to combat the system. You, the police, and the government are here to uphold. Whether we realize it or not, people are dying all over the country at the hands of the police. And their families are left with a profound injustice that weighs upon their shoulders. It keeps happening over and over again. We keep giving guns to people with the right to murder anybody on sight. And this vicious cycle of injustice endures. The more people become conscious of their systematic oppression, the more all of us begin to realize that this has become war. War between the police and the system versus the entire united community. When you are born poor, black, or brown, or what some call an ethnic minority, we are born with a target on our heads. But our communities are not minorities anymore. We are the majority. There are more of us than there are people sitting on city councils. Than there are police officers. Than there are rich, white racists. We need to take advantage of our unity. Division is the tactic of the oppressor. So black, brown, poor, whatever you may be, this is our tierra. This is our pueblo, not theirs. They're outnumbered. If the Constitution, we are supposed to, in the Constitution, we are supposed to be guaranteed rights. And in the Constitution, it says that if these rights are not being protected by the government, we can dismantle it. If rights are exclusive to rich, white men, then what are we doing? If the police that are enforcing these laws are out to kill PLCs or the poor, then what are we waiting for? If the police don't protect and serve us, then who? If not Antonio Arce and the 44 people shot by Maricopa County Police in 2018, then who? Hundreds of people in Maricopa County were able to mobilize in under 24 hours in front of Tempe Police Headquarters. Just think of what we can do in 48 hours. Just imagine what we can do and triple that. With the community by our side, we will tear the city down until we get justice. Never again do we want to see another body drop at the hands of police. Never again do we want to witness families crying in agony as they march down the same alley their son, their brother, and their friend was killed in. We recognize this as a national issue, so we will act accordingly. Never underestimate the power of the people. And we demand justice.
Thank you. Jasmine Lester. And then after Jasmine, Sarah Tacola? After Sarah is Ramon Aquino?
Hi, my name is Jasmine Lester. I grew up in Phoenix. I've lived the past 10 years in Tempe. And I just want to say that I'm angry, but mostly I'm scared. I know that Phoenix PD is the most deadly, most violent police force in the nation. They killed, not killed, but they shot 44 people last year, which is double the amount they shot last year, which is a concern. And I know that data shows that Tempe PD arrests more black people than any other people, any other race in the city. So as a black person, as someone who has a black family living in Tempe, I want to know, what are you doing? What is Tempe doing besides conducting a really shady investigation of the murder of a child? Right? Like, why do we even have to be here? Why do, when we read, you know, the media reports, we read that the Tempe PD and the police are showing evidence, you know, to the media before the family? How does that make me as a citizen feel, you know, if something like this were to happen to my brother who is, you know, a black man living in Tempe? I don't trust you all. I don't feel like you're doing anything. I don't feel like you care that a child was murdered. So I'm really like, I'm looking at all your faces and like, glad that you're listening, but I want to know what you're actually going to do.
Thank you. Sarah? Sarah Tacola?
Where's Sylvia?
Ramon Aquino? Ramon Aquino?
Where's the chief?
We have a process in place. I'm asking, Ramon, wait, do you have Sarah Tacola? Hey, go ahead. Go ahead. You have three minutes. I don't know.
Can you go get her back? You're her boss.
Actually. Go ahead, you can speak. She's, I'm sure, she's on her way back. Go ahead. Okay, she went to the restroom.
Where's the chief?
She went to the restroom. You can go ahead and speak. She went to the restroom. If you go ahead and speak.
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want now?
No!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want now?
No!
Say it's me!
Antonio Arce!
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 No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No racism!
Police!
No racism!
This is a message from Julian Castro in Texas. Think he's in Congress? He's running for president. This is what he has to say to you. And I'll send the link so that you can see it too. Here's what we know. Antonio Arce was 14 years old and he had his entire life ahead of him. On January 15th, responding to a 911 call, a suspected burglary in progress, Officer Jean arrived on scene and spotted Antonio in a truck that was allegedly being burglarized. In less than two minutes of body cam footage, a tragic scene unfolded. According to released body cam footage, the only word Officer Jean uttered was "hey", before Antonio ran away in fear. And Officer Jean opened fire. A bullet struck Antonio in his back. Jean then radioed that Antonio had a handgun, which police have now claimed is an airsoft gun, a BB gun, which bears a bright orange tip showing the non-lethal weapon. Antonio was taken to the hospital where he died, but his family was not notified for 10 hours. His parents never got a chance to say goodbye. That's what we know, but that's not all we know. Because sadly, Antonio's story isn't an isolated incident. It joins a deeply disturbing pattern of similar tragedies in this country of black and Latino youth who have been fatally shot by police officers despite posing no imminent risk to those officers. Each time it happens, we are left to pray that justice be served. Let me be clear. I want justice for Antonio. But I want the justice to have protected him in the moments before this encounter. I want that the justice to have stopped him from being fatally shot. We can't just demand justice now. We have to ensure that justice then. Why was the officer on the scene for such a short period of time before opening fire? Why was lethal force used at all when Antonio didn't present a threat? Why wasn't protocol followed in notifying his parents immediately after the shooting? Today, Antonio's family and local activists are gathering to demand these answers from City Hall. If you're in the area, I hope you join them. And if not, please join our petition of this movement. Let us demand justice for Antonio. But let us also remember that justice is a verb. It's not something we have the right to wish for in retrospect unless we have to work hard for committing ourselves to guaranteeing it in real time. That requires us to confront the hard-to-face and hard-to-ignore truth that just in a week after Antonio was killed, police in Florida take into custody a young white man who had just murdered five women in a bank. The shooter was armed at the time of the arrest, was wearing a bulletproof vest, had earlier committed a crime. He is alive today. This is how unconscious bias works. It creates a two-tiered justice system. The result is that too often, the metrics for things like safety and justice for white Americans are the very things that deprive folks of color of the protection of the same concepts. We need to reimagine our justice system so that it truly works for all people. As president, I will work to do just that. If elected, I will work with Congress to ensure funding so that every single law enforcement officer who patrols our street wears a body camera. I will also use my executive power to target unconscious biases in policing and increasing accountability of law enforcement officials. This will include executive actions aimed at demanding immediate data collection on use of force by law enforcement, strengthening and increasing law enforcement of federal protections against discriminatory policy and directing increased resources to unconscious bias awareness training. I would create an office within the Department of Justice specifically dedicated to addressing discriminatory policing and strengthening the relationship between communities and law enforcement so that the safety and justice are guaranteed to all people, no matter who they are, no matter where they come from. Antonio deserved better. Antonio deserves justice now. Antonio deserved justice then. Together, we can ensure he and many more like him get it. This is from somebody who's running for President of the United States. This is his message to you.
I mean, you guys haven't said anything. Not one word from Mayor, not one word from the council.
I would tell you, the reason why we can't say anything because the law prohibits us from responding to comments that's unscrutiny. So I will tell you, in all due respect, we want to hear you voice, we want to hear from you, and that's why we're listening to you, we want to hear from you. So that's why we have a whole bunch of cards. Ma'am, I hear what you're saying. We want a whole bunch of other people to speak.
Antonio's mom started messaging him early on in the afternoon. After he was shot and your officers took his phone, they were reading the messages the mom was sending. "Mijo, donde estas?" "Son, where are you?" Your officers were reading those messages. She would call him, desperate, not knowing where her son was. Desperate, looking for her son. Your officers would answer and hang up. They were reading the messages. "Son, where are you? I'm worried about you." If it's true that he died in the hospital, she didn't get to say her last goodbye. There's a lot more that happened. Not only did you kill Antonio, you killed his mother's spirit. Her mother couldn't come to the funeral. Her dad came and he says he feels dead inside. The father is dead inside. I'm dead inside. The people behind me. You killed us all when you killed Antonio. There's much more than just the shooting that happened. The way that the officers handled themselves. The way that the detective loomed over the mother for an hour before telling her what happened and just watched her cave. He watched her fall apart for an hour before telling her what happened and then waited an additional half an hour before telling her that it was a police officer. There's a lot that happened. And you need to do something about it.
Thank you. Ramon Aquino? After Ramon, we have Kelsey Meeger and then Julia Golding. Julie Golding.
My name is Ramon Aquino. As you can see, the emotions of the people here, you can see that these are the everyday people, these are the community members that have to deal with all these injustices that we face every single day. They killed Antonio Arce. The reporter said that when he was shot, he was still crying. And as he was crying, I could only imagine what he was thinking when he was crying in that pool of blood. That he was a child. That he deserved to have a full life ahead of him. And that responsibility is on your hands. By you upholding those policies, that are strengthening the police, that's all in here. And it's not just, "I'm doing my job." We're done, we're over that, really. It's not, you're not just doing your job. A 14-year-old kid was killed. Let that sink through your head. That's somebody's child, that's somebody's family member is gone. What does that mean in your procedure? What does that mean in your code? Well, what does that mean? What does that mean to you as a person, as a human being? Are you gonna keep defending these officers? Or are you gonna look for some solutions? Accountability? Are you gonna look into doing a civilian review board with subpoena power? And we're not asking, we're demanding that. These are the people are demanding that we get a civilian review board that creates accountability and not run by the police. And not by the police, by civilians, by the people. Not by the police. That's what we want. So if you want to document something, document that. Document that we want a civilian review board with accountability. With subpoena power, no half-stepping civilian review board. I'm talking about civilian board, by the civilian board, with accountability. With the grand jury. And so I say, you know, like, a lot of the times we're speaking to you, we don't have a chance to have a dialogue conversation. We just come to this room and you guys are all dressed up in your suits. And you guys get paid and you go home to your families, you're gonna go hug your kids when you guys get home. But Antonio Arce and his families are not gonna hug him tonight. What they're gonna do is they're gonna cry. They're gonna cry because this happens, not just here in Tempe. It happens in Phoenix. It happens all around the country because of the policies of, "I'm doing my job" policy. It's not enough no more. It's not gonna cut it anymore. The people are standing up, we're rising up, and we're saying, "We had enough." We had enough with rhetoric. We had enough with city council meetings that go nowhere. We want change and we want solutions now. So how are you all gonna figure that out? When you all go home, try to figure out these solutions. And when you do that, listen to all these people right here because they have all the solutions. Because they're the ones that are deeply affected. They have to go home to those neighborhoods. I'm speaking for myself. I have to go to those impoverished neighborhoods and I have to deal with it. And I have to know that the reason why is because we're not getting invested in. There is no investment in the community. They don't even fix our sidewalks where I'm from. I go and I talk to city council and they don't change a damn thing. So what does that do? What are we here for? What are we here for? Let me ask you that. What are we here for? We need investment in our community. We need to defund the police. And we need to invest it into our community.
Thank you.
A deep, no, I'm not done.
Kelsey Meeger?
I'm not done. No, I'm not done yet. No, we need a deep investment in our community and changing the strategy and changing the hate culture of the police department. We ask that they get trained properly, that they get trained properly for de-escalation, for cultural awareness, that they get trained, they get the proper training to be able to deal with people. And in that process, we want to invest in our community because we know that both go hand in hand. You cannot have one without the other. You gotta have accountability and you have to have investment in our community. If not, you can't, you don't have no reason to stand up here because none of you all are investing in our community.
Thank you. Kelsey? And after Kelsey, Julie Golding. And after J. Eason.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Maher. I live in Scottsdale, Arizona. I've been here for four years. My family lives in Tempe. I stand here with a lot of privilege. White privilege is real and unconscious bias is a very unfortunate thing that plagues our police officers. We need training, training, training. Like, why are these things happening all over the United States? And Phoenix is the most deadly police force. That's well-known. I just can't believe that this is happening. I feel badly because I know that if it was somebody, you know, a white 13-year-old, I don't know if this would have happened, to be honest. And it's hard to stand here and know that. So I'm with AZ Resist and I just hope that, you know, we can do some better evaluations as to who we hire. And, I mean, we need to look at these things. And I don't want all of these people here to not be recognized. I really hope that you guys take this home with you. Because this isn't a job where you shouldn't take it home with you. Like, this should be on your mind. And you guys should... Yeah. So, justice, justice for Antonio Arce. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Golding? Julie Golding, and then after J. Eason, after J., Taylor Dance. Julie?
Yes, my name is Julie Golding from Phoenix. I just want to take a time right now just to express my condolences to the family of Antonio. These are not isolated incidents. They are symptomatic of a broader set of racial disparities that exist in our criminal system. And I just want to give people a few statistics to try and put into context why emotions are so raw around these issues. According to various studies, not just one, but a wide range of studies that have been carried out over a number of years, African-Americans are 30% more likely than whites to be pulled over. After being pulled over, African-Americans and Hispanics are three times more likely to be searched. Last year, African-Americans were shot by police at more than twice the rate of whites. African-Americans are arrested at twice the rate of whites. African defendants are 75% - sorry, my eyes - more likely to be charged with offenses carrying mandatory minimums than receive sentences. They also receive sentences that are almost 10% longer. Oh, something's here. 10% longer than comparable whites arrested for the same crime. So if you add it all up, the African-American and Hispanic population who make up only 30% of the general population are incarcerated. Now, these are facts. And when incidents like this occur, there's a big chunk of our fellow citizenry that feels as if because of the color of their skin, they are not being treated the same. And that hurts. And that should trouble all of us. This is not just a black issue, it's not just a Hispanic issue. This is an American issue that we should all care about. All fair-minded people should be concerned. Now, this is a part of a speech given by former President Obama on July 7, 2016, regarding the police killings of Alton Sterling and Philando Castro. 2016, two and a half years ago. Nothing has changed. We have to change. Do something. We've all voted you, some of you, in. You work for us, you work for us. Two and a half years ago, nothing's changed. In fact, I think it's gotten worse. It is worse. So what do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Now!
Now, do your job!
J. Eason? J., and then after J., Taylor Dance? The following, Taylor Dance is... Cop... Surtah? Kamalapie? If you can help me pronounce that. Please.
Hello, I'm J. Eason. My parents told me when you are listening to people, you should sit up to show them respect. So, everybody that is leaning back, this is not a college lecture. Sit the fuck up and respect your constituents! I wasn't born in Tempe. I come to school here. It's a nice place, I guess. But there's a lot of racism. And a lot of people getting killed because their skin doesn't look like yours. Don't look like yours, don't look like yours, don't look like yours, don't look like yours. Kind of thankful because I don't like burning in the sun, but... A 14-year-old child died. And a lot of your eyes look cold. Look a little shaky, like, you keep, like, bringing them back and forth. Like, you're telling a lie. Like I do when I'm telling a lie to my mom. And you, I don't really know you. I just found out your name was Sylvia. You look like a liar too. You look like a liar. You're a black man sitting on a police force that murders brown people every fucking day. You are part of a system of oppression. It's kind of sad that we have to come here and we have to tell you how to do your jobs, that we have to tell you. I don't even know my bachelor's degree and I'm smarter than half of you. All of you, yeah, let's be honest. You can show your sympathy by frowning. You can do all of that. But that's not gonna bring a child back. It's not gonna bring anybody back that your police department has murdered. It's kind of disgraceful. It's sad. It's sad, and you're still leaning back as I talk to you. I don't know what the point of this is because it seems as though nothing's gonna be done because you laugh when we make jokes, because we're funny, I know. But, I don't know, it's kind of sad. Rest in peace, Antonio.
Rest in power.
May he live!
May he live! Antonio Arce!
Taylor Dance. And after Taylor... Como Pret? Did I say that correctly? Como Pret Sorita? And then Jill Valenzuela.
Hello, I'm Taylor Dance. I would like to cede my time to whoever's next in the lineup.
Oh, Como Pret, is that correct?
Please stop, please, please stop mispronouncing my name. Like, it's not funny. It's not funny. Like, my name is Como Pret Car Sahota. And I'm pretty sure half of the audience, since it's mostly POZ, have names that cannot come out of your mouth properly. Just like an apology and action for Antonio cannot come out of your mouth properly. But I'm not gonna talk to you yet, I'm gonna talk to you. So, Yarmore, being that's your name, I have a hard time with white names. I decided to figure out if you were posting on Twitter or tweeting, since you're looking at your phone so much, and I had the unfortunate reality of having to look at what you posted yesterday after you collaborated with media without informing the family and showed them a video of their son dying to show the media. And you called it "the pursuit of truth," like trying to find the truth. That was a fucking publicity stunt. That was no way trying to find the truth! Because if you gave a shit about the truth or justice, the family wouldn't be in the situation they're in now because Antonio wouldn't be dead. He would not be dead. And you wouldn't be pulling these fake-ass publicity stunts, just like you all are right now. You can change the damn rules. You could be commenting, you could have put a resolution down. You knew we were fucking coming. We've had visuals, we've had events. And this is what you do. I'm 22 years old. I've lived in Tempe for almost two years. I grew up in Washington State. Since I was a little kid, I have known of police violence. Not just in Washington State lines, but back in my family's homeland of Punjab, throughout the USA because my family has been racially profiled for the color of our skin and our long hair and our turbans. And when I moved to Tempe, Arizona, I work with kids on a regular basis, since I was a kid because I saw how much fear I had of authority figures. Because you all have never gave a brown or a black or indigenous kid. Several of the individuals who have come up work with young people, work as social workers, work as teachers, and are telling you, we are all fucking telling you, you need to divest from these jackasses and invest in us, in the community. Because we know how to fucking take care of our kids. We know what accountability looks like. Antonio was taken out of school. Do you know the increased risk for kids of color when they are taken out of school to have police interaction? It is fucking high, particularly kids of color, black, Latino, and indigenous kids. That is a system failure. The police department failed him, the Tempe schools failed him, and you are failing him, just like you have before him and just like you will after. Because you obviously don't seem to want to do anything about it. And I'm looking at everyone, because we have the city manager here too. And they have a lot of power that we don't get to control as much because they're unelected. I think they're unelected in the city of Tempe too, right? So I'm looking at all of you, everyone who participates in this system. You have a fucking obligation. But more importantly, we have an obligation, and we're not gonna stop trying to protect our youth.
That's right.
We're gonna come every fucking day. We're gonna come and do our part as best we can until we can finally run this fucking system the fucking out of here.
Jill Valenzuela. Hilda.
My name is Jill Valenzuela. I'm a public school teacher in Tempe. I've taught for Tempe School District for 14, 15 years in this community. I've had to teach students that have gotten their brother killed, mothers coming to school and the child, and the family torn apart, the aftermath of what it does to families. And I have seen this. I've helped families deal with this by coming into our classroom. This cannot be the new normal for Tempe. When I went to the university here, one of the things they stressed to me as a teacher is allow children to educate and learn and go on field trips and learn. And so that's something that I do. I don't take education for children. Throwing children out of school is not the right thing to do to students. It's not the right thing. All children should go on field trips as educational experiences. Right now, they sit in rooms sometimes because they didn't behave, so they don't get to go to some field trips. I'm a teacher, and all of my students in my classroom will go on a field trip because they are gonna get educated and they are gonna learn. Now, the next teacher next to me, if they want to follow that rule of where they think that a child should get into the school to prison pipeline, that's not happening in my classroom. They are gonna get educated and they are gonna learn. And so, I live right down the street right here, and I've lived in this community for a long time, and I've always felt safe. But you know what? I don't feel safe anymore. Because, you know, I know a lot of different groups of people, a lot of families. And you know what? You know who they say the worst gang is in Tempe? Them, over there. You're the worst gang in Tempe, and you're the leader of the gang. I'm not worried about another gang, the Quarenta over there, I'm not worried about them. I'm worried about you killing our kids and our community. That's what I'm worried about. You're the gang leader, and you're the other gang leader following her.
Hilda? Hilda? Or Mary Cruz Ramirez?
I'm gonna translate. Hi, my name is Mary Cruz from Arizona. Hoy estoy aquí. I'm here today. Como madre. As a mother. Representando a la mamá de Antonio. As a mother representing the mother of Antonio. Donde yo les quiero decir. I want to tell you. Que la policía tiene el derecho de cuidarnos. That the police has a right to protect us. Pero no fue así. But that was not the case here. De hoy en adelante como madre. From here on out as a mother. Voy a pensarlo dos veces. I'm gonna think about it twice. Para llamar a la policía. Before I call the police. No quiero sufrir. I don't want to suffer. El dolor de la madre de Antonio. The pain that Antonio's mother is going through. Donde le han robado. Where they have stolen. La mitad de su corazón. Half of her heart. Y hoy le digo a la policía. And today I tell the police. Qué siente en el corazón? What do you feel in your heart? De pensar. To think. Que algún ser querido. That a loved one. Puede ser arrebatada la vida. Whose life can be stolen. Por cualquier persona. By anyone. Ahora los invito a ustedes a esta reflexión. I invite you to reflect on this. Cierren los ojos, por favor. Close your eyes, please, everyone. Por favor, cierre los ojos. Close your eyes, chief. Piensen. Think about. En un ser querido. In a loved one. En un hijo. In a child. En una madre. In a mother. En cualquier persona para ustedes que aman tanto. In anyone in your life that you love so dearly. Que al llegar ahorita a su casa ustedes. That once you get home right now. No lo encuentran con vida. You won't find them with their life. Por favor, cierre los ojos. Please close your eyes, chief. No lo encuentran con vida. Imagine finding your loved one without a life. Simplemente por la espalda. And on their back. Le han arrebatado. They have stolen. Lo más preciado. The most precious. A una madre. The most precious thing a mother could have. Y a un joven que tenía un futuro por delante. A young one with a future before him. Esto los dejo en sus conciencias. I leave this in your conscience. Y especialmente en la policía. Especially you, the police. Para poder. To be able to. Cuidar a nuestra comunidad. Take care of our community. Gracias. Thank you.
Milagros Renteria? Manuel, okay. And then after her, Manuel Angelo? And after Manuel, we have Brent Whiting.
My name is Milagros, I am 16 years old, and I am part of a fight to get cops out of schools. This situation adds another reason to why I'm doing this. The fact that I walk into school with fear is sad. The fact that I can't walk in my community because I'm scared isn't okay. Why, when cops get killed, justice is given immediately? But when a cop kills a person, he did it because of self-defense. And we have to fight for the justice. You want us to think that cops aren't here to protect us? But how do you expect me to believe that when they're killing people? Like my mother said, it's as if they're out hunting. You expect me to go to school and feel safe? As a young student, I am scared. How can I trust that I'm not next? Antonio was 14 years old and he was starting his life, this is unfair. You want me to honor the cops who separate families, who kill people and get away with it? This is injustice, and we demand justice. Justice for Antonio.
And then Brent, after Manuel, and after Brent, Jamal Johnson?
My name is Manuel Angulo, I reside in Gilbert. I'm a high school senior, involved in martial arts. I'm an immigrant. I'm the type of kid that these people are here to protect. I thank you all. Like Antonio's, my family came to this country to gain a dignifying quality of life. Like Antonio's, my mother brought her children here to escape the oppression, to escape the unsafety, to escape the uncertainty that one of us, a member of our family, will not come home at night. When the fatality happened, when the tragedy happened, the mother of Antonio tried to call the police because, as she stated after, she trusted the police, but they failed her. We immigrants come to this country because of the opportunity, because the promise that this is the land of opportunities. But how can this be the land of opportunities if we are to be taken away from it? We come here, we work our hardest. We do our best to be a productive part of this community. But we are treated so badly because of the color of our skin. Back in my home, the problem I didn't have wasn't because of the color of my skin, it was because of my social status, because of my poverty. How insane it is that in this country, that's an issue to you. Antonio's family came here to look for a better place, but Arizona wasn't a place for them. They expected to move soon. Antonio did not receive the mental support that he needed in his school that would have enabled him to continue to thrive as a student as the school system should have been able to provide. We came here trusting that we would protect it. That mother trusted that her children would be protected. My mom trusted that I would be protected. But are we? I'm not from Gilbert. After this, I'm gonna walk a few blocks to a car in the streets of Tempe. Will I be safe? Gracias.
Brent? And then after Brent, we have Jamal Johnson. And after Jamal, we have Patty Serrano.
Hello, my name is Brent Whiting. I currently live in Phoenix, Arizona, which is obviously the deadliest police state in the country. I'm a walking statistic as a black man, one of the few here. And obviously, there's nobody here on your board that would represent me. That's obvious. Which means that I would be foreign to all of you. My life, anything that I do, anywhere I walk, and what I claim in my life, as well as my friends. Everybody here is here because of a deadly attack of somebody who was killed running away because more or less, according to the police officers, you know, he was a threat to society. I can't tell because your story keeps changing. And I would really hope that you get it straight for the next time that you discuss this topic. Because the truth is out there in what you see. I've seen hunters do the same thing. They'll say something real quick, they stalk their prey, they take aim, and as it's running away, you shoot. Now, we're here as a collective, as a collective to try to make this stop. We want this all to end. We don't want to see another child dead, and I should hope you don't. But considering the policies that are put in place for you to protect anybody who is in the same profession as you, I feel that you should treat all of us the exact same way that you would treat an officer. And you should treat them the same way that you would treat us. So you shouldn't be protecting those in power because they are nothing but a suit, a uniform, a badge, and a gun, but you should not give them as much power as you do because they're supposed to uphold the law, not be above it. So anybody who winds up shooting an officer winds up getting investigated extremely hard. And I know you all back that. When will you treat us the exact same way? You have to treat us the same way as you treat them, they have to treat us the same way that they would treat themselves. That's the only way we're gonna wind up doing this differently because otherwise, I'm still gonna be a walking statistic. And I will still be the one more liable to be shot by them than you will. You have to realize also, we are here to protect everybody, including your own children. Your own children could have been the same ones that were shot, just like Antonio right in the back as a target, as an animal being running away from danger. Any one of your children. And guess what? We would still be here fighting for your children. For all of your kids. So you have to hope that all that we're doing is trying to protect not just ourselves, not just the black and brown communities that are targeted by the deadliest... Why is this... I'm from Jersey. Soy de Jersey, no somos así Vivo en Brooklyn, Nueva York, no somos así Deberían estar enfadados, deberían amar a sus hijos y los proteger Estuve dos pies alejado de un niño que fue disparado por un oficial de Tempe, sabiendo Mirando sus jeans como un adolescente, Antonio Arce colgando en su caja Ver y mirar su rostro y memorizar lo que es durante el resto de mi vida, sabiendo Que bajo esos zapatos, hay una agujera de pistola estancada entre su espalda Que fue creada para matarme a mí a lo mejor, Latinos a lo mejor Y él solo se queda en vacaciones Si obtengo ese honor de poder hacer eso, tal vez debería comprar una pistola hoy Pero realmente no quiero esa elección y no quiero hacer eso Ni quiero que ninguno de sus hijos pasase por eso, incluyendo a sus hijos Así que por favor, hagan algo sobre sus políticas Hagan algo sobre ese oficial, ¡háganlo despedido! No quieren proteger No quieren proteger a personas como éstas, juré en todo Si alguna vez vi a un abogado o a alguien más que trabajaba en una tienda Si alguna vez tuvieron a alguien en su oficina que estaba robándote o hiciera algo mal ¿Cuántos de ustedes estarían allí y los protegerían? ¿Cuántos pasarían por proteger a un empleado malo? Pero, ¿por qué protegería a un empleado malo que en el film hizo algo tan horrible? Que tomó la vida de un adolescente de 14 años, no puede entender la historia correcta, y todavía lo pagarán Tienen que cuestionar su juicio, cuestionar quién eres, porque Dios no ve esa uniforme Gracias
Mr. Johnson Y luego después de Mr. Johnson, tenemos a Patty Serrano, y después de Patty Serrano, tenemos a Dan O'Neil
¿Cómo estás? Mi nombre es Jamal Johnson, soy de Philadelphia, Pennsylvania He ido a muchas marchas, protestas, funerales Y reuniones familiares sobre Especialmente jóvenes, negros y blancos, hombres y mujeres que han sido asesinados Retiro de la policía, en el post office Y después de hacer eso, fui a las calles porque me cansé de vernos matados Vengo aquí para apoyar a la familia, apoyar a la comunidad Y decir que me disculpo de que todavía no hemos hecho nada con esto Es realmente triste cuando estoy en la parte trasera y veo a todos Mientras veo a otros miembros del consejo y otras ciudades y estados Hacer lo que hacen, ya sabes Y digo a mí mismo, ¿cuántos de ustedes, después de terminar aquí, van a salir con nosotros y hablar? Y decir, mira, quiero involucrarme O van a ir a casa, abrazar a sus hijos, cenar la noche Ya sabes, es realmente triste Y soy padre, abuelo y gran-abuelo Por eso hago lo que hago Con una organización llamada ¡Detente matarnos! Simplemente eso, ¡detente matarnos! Ya sabes Los negros y los blancos también necesitan vivir Me cansé de ir a funerales, me cansé de hablar con las familias Me cansé durante la marcha que hago cada año, de Philadelphia a Washington DC Al Congreso de la Puebla Al Departamento de Justicia, al Congreso Negro Vengo y les pregunto cada año, ¿qué queremos hacer? Así que cuando vengo a ver esto aquí, de lo que escuché, desafortunadamente Dije que quiero salir y apoyar No sé qué va a tomar, pero lo único que voy a dejar saber Es que en Philadelphia hacemos cosas diferentes Una cosa que hacemos, no dejamos que duela Vamos a su casa Vamos donde come Vamos donde se divierten, donde juegan los juegos de béisbol Anywhere que descubramos que están, estamos allí Porque queremos asegurarnos de que no nos olviden Y hemos hecho eso en un cierto caso, y no tengo mucho tiempo Un joven llamado David Jones fue disparado en la espalda por un oficial de la policía Mientras estaba corriendo, oficial de la policía ahora La policía no estaba haciendo nada al respecto La ciudadanía no estaba haciendo nada al respecto Pero entonces, ¿sabes qué?, algunos de nosotros fuimos a su casa Hizo todo tipo de ruido Fueron a la ciudad, cuando vimos al maestro en la calle Fuimos y golpearon sus pequeñas cosas de publicidad que hacen todos ustedes Hicimos lo que necesitamos para que nos vean frente a la cámara Para que la gente sepa que no estábamos yendo No estoy diciendo que no hagan esto Solo te digo lo que hacemos Gracias
Gracias Patty Serrano Y luego Dan O'Neil, después de Dan O'Neil, John O'Neil
En realidad, me gustaría tomar un momento de silencio Y la razón por la que es porque venir aquí esta noche Y ver a todos ustedes a sur de este podium Con esta clara división Viene a darse cuenta de que no he visto una cara aquí, a sur de este podium Atender a ninguno de Antonio's vigiles Llegar a lado de la familia de Antonio Hacer un comentario público Pero si mi memoria recibe correctamente Comentarios públicos podrían ser tomados cuando una ciudad de Tempe fue matada en un auto Pero no podemos escuchar comentarios públicos cuando un niño es matado Bajo tu protección y responsabilidad ¿Cómo es eso? Así que quiero tomar un momento de silencio y espero que cada uno de ustedes tome ese momento Para reflexionar sobre ese hecho Si hicieron un comentario sobre una muerte en un auto Pero no pueden hacer un comentario sobre un niño de 14 años que es su responsabilidad ¡Señorita a usted! ¡Señorita a cada uno de ustedes! Así que tomemos un momento de silencio para Antonio Tony Arce El niño de 14 años que estamos aquí todos para honrar esta noche, al menos a su lado de este podium
Mi nombre es Patty Serrano Soy una miembro integrada de esta comunidad durante diez años He ido a trabajar todos los días Para trabajar en la universidad, soy alumna ASU Soy una madre Y es por eso que estoy aquí esta noche, soy una mamá Soy la madre de un niño latino de 10 años Y soy la tía o tía de varios niños latinos de color Y estoy preocupada más que nunca Más que nunca Estoy aquí como una mamá Que cree en cualquier vulnerabilidad Y la dignidad de la vida que cada niño posee, no importa cuál sea el pasado de ese niño No importa la color de su piel Cada niño es vulnerable, que está vivo Tener respeto y dignidad por la vida de cualquier niño significa venir aquí esta noche Me sacrificar el tiempo, es ocho de la noche, ¿no crees que soy una mamá? He estado mirando el tiempo Esto es un sacrificio para que esté aquí esta noche, debería estar en casa preparando a mi hijo para dormir Pero no estoy allí porque estoy sentado en solidaridad con una mamá Que se está llorando para dormir frenéticamente Si eres un padre, estaría perdiendo mi mente ahora mismo si fuese la mamá de Antonio No sé cómo Sandra está sobreviviendo Pero sí porque no tiene otra opción Y está sobreviviendo para traer justicia a su hijo Y estamos todos aquí con ella, puede que no esté físicamente presente Y no la culpo por eso porque apenas puedo mantenerme en pie ahora mismo Sabiendo que hay un niño que está muerto De nuevo en manos y responsabilidad de todos a sur de este podium Estoy aquí con muchos de nosotros, de toda la ciudad, de todo el estado, el país, con un candidato presidencial Todos los ojos están en ti, Tempe ¿Quieres hacer noticia nacional? Así es como lo haces, matando a niños Estamos aquí para contarte el cargo, para hacer tu trabajo ¿Qué significa eso? No has podido encontrar una solución, la estamos trayendo a ti esta noche Puedes arreglar esto, comienza a arreglarlo esta noche Empieza escribiendo una resolución, tienes el poder y ese es tu trabajo Escribir una resolución para que el oficial Jean fuera Fuera y procesado Tienes el poder para escribir una resolución para conseguir al jefe de la policía Que está aquí presente y ha puesto una cara sucia esta noche Que me recuerda a un niño de escuela católica que ha estado en las noticias Siento que estoy viendo esa cara detrás de este podium toda la noche Y ha sido extremadamente decepcionante y doloroso Tienes dos resoluciones que puedes escribir Puedes comenzar a tomar responsabilidad y revelar verdades En lugar de tratar de desenfrenar a un niño Puedes empezar a hablar verdades Y volver a cualquier cosa que se ha dicho, porque como dijo María esta noche Mucho se ha olvidado, que son hechos Puedes comenzar a tomar responsabilidad haciendo tu trabajo Y traer políticas a tu ciudad que se hacen para servir y proteger al público En lugar de servir y proteger a hombres en azul Ellos se unen a ese trabajo y tú te unes a proteger a nosotros Mayor Mitchell Tengo palabras para ti esta noche ¡Damas y caballeros, dices que este proceso hasta ahora ha sido transparente y honesto! Cuando lo leí, me senté en mi escritorio y me derramé lágrimas En el trabajo ¿Por qué? Porque cuando un padre frenético informa que su hijo está perdido Sin saber la verdad durante diez horas Sandra informó a su hijo que estaba perdido diez horas antes de que supiera ningún update Un oficial se sentó con ella en su casa Jefe Moore, estoy seguro de que sabías lo que estaba pasando Envías a un oficial a su casa Para supervisarla mientras pensaba que tenía un reporte de hijo perdido durante diez horas En esas diez horas, Antonio no falleció Fue enviado al hospital Tú eres responsable de robarte a una madre de estar con su hijo muerto Y robarte su último adiós Esa oportunidad existía Quiero que todos aquí reconozcan eso Sandra, como una mamá, podría haber mantenido a su hijo en ese hospital Pudo haberle atrapado sabiendo que iba a irse a manos de un oficial Pero lo quitaste Lo quitaste de una sola mano Y eras consciente Y si la noticia llegó a alguno de ustedes en esas diez horas Lo quitaste de ella Eso es inculpable Relejaste videos limitados ¿Cómo es eso transparente y honesto, mayor? ¿Mantuiste un testigo? El departamento que supervisas es responsable ¿Mantuvo un testigo y su familia? Incluso en cajas sin un permiso de búsqueda mientras pasaron horas Invadiendo su privacidad y su casa Cuando eran testigos ¿Eso sigue la política, sigue la orden y el orden de la forma en que requieres de todos nosotros y esperas que hagamos? ¿Es eso transparente y honesto? Eso es lo que dice el mayor de la ciudad de Tempe Que el proceso ha sido transparente y honesto desde el principio Pero la evidencia, los hechos son que ha sido el opuesto completo Y has hecho nada Mayor, también dijiste "Que la nación debe recoger el juicio hasta que las investigaciones se concluyan" Dijiste eso, Mayor Mitchell ¿Crees que es justo decir que el oficial Jean, en esos dos minutos Mantuvo su juicio? ¿Seguía el protocolo? ¿Pasó por su cabeza, revisando el protocolo? Investigando lo que realmente estaba pasando? Y me cansé de este niño llamado burglarizar un vehículo, es una afirmación de investigación en curso ¿Cómo puedes contarte el público Pidiéndonos que recogen el juicio cuando la evidencia es clara? Somos más inteligentes que ustedes piensan Puedes decir esas palabras Pero vemos tus acciones o inacciones Tú tienes sangre en tus manos Y no digo eso en ningún modo, tienes sangre de un niño en tus manos Ya sea que hayas estado en este board, o en este consejo, o siendo elegido Estoy mirando a un par de ustedes aquí que recibí emails Por favor, elimine de cualquier lista de la ciudad de Tempe después de esta noche Y nunca, espero que nunca reciba ningún tipo de solicitud Hasta que empieces a hacer tu trabajo El público es tu jefe, eres un oficial elegido Tu financiación viene de dólares pagados por el impuesto Y necesitas comenzar a hacer tu trabajo No deberíamos tener acceso limitado a videos Cuando los medios, las cosas que quieres arreglar, tienen acceso Porque adivina quién paga por esas cámaras corporales ¿Quién es el video footage? Es un colectivo Estás donde estás ahora mismo, jefe, debido al público Cada uno de ustedes lo hace Vivimos en un mundo hoy donde un hombre negro puede entrar en una banca y ejecutar Cinco mujeres Pero todos sabemos, un niño latino, un niño negro Ves a un oficial y no le dan un vino Hacia el punto de asesinato Estos son hechos Y la ciudad de Tempe ahora es parte de esos hechos Esto es basado en evidencia, esto no es cuestionable Y si tienes decencia y dignidad, si eres un padre, mejor dijeras algo Di algo Es inexcusable, di algo, y espero que retengas tus palabras, mayor Di algo, ¡háganlo, oficial Jean! ¡Háganle a su jefe de la policía! Escriba políticas y deja de desenfrenar el nombre de este niño
Gracias Dan O'Neil Después de Dan O'Neil, John O'Neil Y después de John, el reverendo Redim Robinson
Mi nombre es Dan O'Neil Quiero comenzar por agradecer a todos en la sala por estar aquí Y espero, damas y caballeros, que escuchen cada palabra que dicen Y eso también para ti, jefe Tengo 70 años Y he ido a muchas reuniones como esta durante años Muchas reuniones como esta Donde jóvenes son disparados por la policía Y en este caso, asesinados Martin Luther King una vez dijo algo así El mayor peligro no viene de nuestro enemigo El mayor peligro viene de la silencio de nuestros amigos Y tengo amigos en este consejo de la ciudad Personas que llamo amigos, que he conocido durante años Y ustedes dos son silenciosos Y no creo en ustedes, mayor, que no puedan hablar Podríamos obtener una resolución de ustedes hoy Podríamos obtener una resolución de ustedes ahora mismo De cómo ese oficial de la policía fue despedido Y este jefe se resignó Ahora, puede que no tenga el poder para hacerlo, pero puede pasar una resolución Así que Randy, llamo a la pregunta Si nos das una resolución ahora, Lauren, seguro que lo aceptaremos De lo contrario, no es nada más que silencio
John O'Neil John O'Neil
Hazlo ahora
John O'Neil John O'Neil Y después de John Redim Robinson Reverendo Robinson Vaya, Mr. O'Neil
Disculpen, es difícil guardar las lágrimas esta noche Escuchando a todos, gracias a todos por venir Tengo el privilegio de mi piel ser blanca Y no tuve que lidiar con esto Pero tengo un hermano de 15 años Y él tiene la piel media negra Y él no tiene ese privilegio Y así, cuando oigo de Antonio Arce, solo pienso en mi hermano Y pienso en venir a casa en una habitación vacía Y la madre And the mother has to do that. And it just brings me to tears every time. And maybe you didn't pull the trigger. But an officer did pull the trigger. And I think that anyone with a common sense can watch that video. And they can see that the police officer got out of his car not knowing what the situation was with his gun in hand. Ready to shoot already. He doesn't know what's going on. No crime has been committed. And he's already got his gun ready. He's hiding behind a trash can, ready to shoot. Why? Is that the policy? Is that the policy to have your gun out, ready to shoot?
Look at it. Look at it!
Is that the policy? Is that the policy to have your gun out, ready to shoot, right as soon as you? You don't know what's going on? You just see a person in a truck, not knowing if that's their truck, not knowing if that's their grandfather's truck, not knowing anything, just having the gun ready, ready to shoot? Soon as he runs out, boom, boom! Is that the policy? I don't think so. And I don't know, you guys don't have the blood on your hands, but you will have the next one on your hands. Okay? Inaction will have the next one on your hands. So a civilian review board with power to see these videos and that anybody with common sense, I don't have a law degree, I don't know what your police... I think anybody can tell that this was not done correctly. It was not just. So for him to be paid leave is disgusting. For him to be not in handcuffs is disgusting. But you have a chance to make it right.
Thank you.
I'm not going to sleep, though.
Where are you going?
Restroom.
Wait, wait.
Okay. Can we take a five to two-minute? Can we take a five to two-minute break? So we go to restroom? And then you're hearing back?
Shut it down!
Shut it down!
You want to wait? We're going to take a two-minute break? And then we'll come right back. Thank you. We'll take a two to five-minute recess.
It's 8:16.
We are reading, moving forward. Mr. Robinson?
Something to y'all. Y'all seem to think this is a joke. Y'all seem to think we're playing games here. Well, I've come to let you know, we're not playing here. When a 14-year-old boy is murdered, all business comes to a halt until justice is served. Now, you, I'm tired of all this. I can't do this. We can't do that. Let me tell y'all something. Some of y'all been in my inbox on Facebook privately talking about how bad this situation is. But we have not heard you all publicly. Tonight, we demand you, right there, I'm looking at you, to get a resolution written up tonight. And guess what? We are not going home. We're not letting up on you until we get a resolution. Let me tell you another thing, too. How long are you going to let her continue running a rogue police force? Huh? How long are you going to allow her to do that? Antonio R. Sae is also your son. As leaders of Tempe, that is your child. Your child was murdered. Are y'all hearing me today? Your child was murdered. My child was murdered because Antonio R. Sae is mine too. Antonio R. Sae is all of ours. You allowed, you allowed our child to get murdered and have been quiet about it. Today, we demand a resolution be written tonight. Tonight. A resolution will be written tonight. Not tomorrow, not at 10 o'clock tonight, but right now. Y'all start drafting up that resolution right now. I better see some pens get to moving. I better see some pens. Y'all not listening. I better see some pens get to moving. Y'all think this is a joke? You need a pen? My brother, you need a pen over there? Start writing. Start drafting up something. Start drafting up something. And we also demand that this officer be fired. And not only fired, but we want him charged. And not only do we want him charged, we want him in jail. We want him in prison. The murderer who murdered Antonio R. Sae needs to be imprisoned. And you all need to let it, need to make sure that happens today. Today. Do you hear me? Today. Today. Start writing. Start getting something drafted up right now. Look, when we say no justice, no peace, there ain't going to be no peace. That means you all will not be able to conduct business in peace. That means you all not be able to go to the bathroom in peace. No eating out in peace. Until there's justice for Antonio R. Sae. Get to writing. Get to writing. I swear to God. I swear to God. We better get something drafted up tonight or there won't be no peace. And that's not a threat, that's a promise.
Thank you. Manuel, Salina?
He already spoke.
Mr. William Robles?
My name is William Robles. Much of you very well-known to me. I'm at Guadalupe News. You know me very well. Lot of stuff that happens in Guadalupe. You guys are real aggressive in Guadalupe. You need to tell your officers to calm down. I'm here for Solid Dirty, for Joey Smith, for Devlin Hollins, and for Antonio. I'm here for unity. Now, for my business, what I'm here for is Groll Parkway and Free Strive. You guys keep saying on your website, you guys are going to have a roundabout. Or you guys are going to have something, some type of traffic signals or something like that. Lot of people from Guadalupe, when they get off the bus or when they walk towards Walmart, they're always crossing the street, taking huge risks of getting hit by cars. I mean, these people with baby strollers going illegal across the street just to get to Walmart. It's a huge risk. It's a safety hazard. When are you guys going to do your roundabout that you guys keep saying on the website? If not, when are you guys going to put a crosswalk at Groll Parkway and Free Strive? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Manuel, Gilbert Cruz. Following Gilbert is Malaney Hardesty. And following Malaney is Luke Black.
My name's Gilbert Cruz. I've lived in Tempe pretty much my whole life. A lot of things that brought up tonight. Antonio was kicked, you know, went to school early. Maybe he should have been in school. And the reason why maybe he wasn't in school is because there's not a lot of funds going to our school. Because although you might be able to sleep soundly tonight, knowing you didn't pull the trigger, those decisions you guys make every time, to give a corporation a tax break, to give a developer a tax break, to give these multinational companies that come here and don't pay any taxes because you give them JIPlets and Up Zones and whatever else, deprive our public schools of funds. And then this is what happens. He could have seen a social worker. Maybe if there was more money going into our public schools instead of funding ASU Stadium where State Farm doesn't have to pay any damn taxes, maybe that child would have some resources. But Antonio needed help. Antonio needed help from the community, from the police. And instead, he got a bullet in the back. That's what he got. And that's why we're all here tonight. So there needs to be a lot of things on the table because a lot of things aren't on the table. What's never on the table is funding for the police associations, for the unions, with your relationships with the police, your non-stop tax breaks for the wealthy, the corporate welfare that you give out. That's never on the table. But what always is on the table is allowing these things to happen without resolutions, without a name on the face of what's actually occurring on the streets, what we deal with every day. So that's why we're all here tonight. And I really hope something comes out of this because I know a couple of you are up for reelection next year. People are going to come for your seats. There's already about 10 people running for those seats. So I would take into account, if you like public service, if you really care about what's going on, stop investing, stop letting people come here and not pay anything in taxes when our schools are failing, when our police are gunning down cops, police gunning down children. And when they get endless support, whether it's more militarization where you guys are inviting $100,000 contracts to arm G4S at our public parks? You're inviting this to happen. This is going to keep happening. Every year, this is going to happen. Our community is being militarized. And you're standing there giving the police more guns, no accountability, no training, more armored vehicles, giving them stingray devices where they're monitoring all of your private communications without committing a crime. This needs a change. We need to have public civilian review boards. This officer needs to be prosecuted. And the funds from the prosecution and any lawsuits resulting, any come out of police pensions.
Malaney Hardesty? Okay. And then Luke Black. And after Luke, we have Drew Senager.
I'd just like to say that you guys should do this sooner than later because this was already trending on CNN.
Can you state your name again? I know you spoke earlier.
That's okay. Kelsey Maher, Scottsdale, Arizona. I mean, this isn't something that's going to go away. It's only going to get bigger. And, you know, I'm so sorry, he was... Where are you? No. I don't know where he went. But, I mean, it's only going to get bigger from here. So you have the choice to make a resolution sooner than later or it's going to spread all over the nation and your guys' names. Yeah, I mean, it's the bad publicity. And, yeah, I mean, it's going to get bad. I'm just letting you guys know. So, and you guys probably already know that. But I just wanted to say that just because, you know, I follow... I'm sure you guys follow national news. But, you know, we are all, we're not going to go away. So I just wanted to say that again. I felt the need to say it's going to start, quote, "trending" sooner than later. So think on that.
Thank you. Luke Black. And following Luke is Drew Senager.
I actually call bullshit on the whole charade. We're not here talking about, like, what was an accident. We're not here talking about, like, what was an accident. We're talking about the system that you and your predecessors had built. We're talking about 2016 in this room, talking about whether or not we were gonna criminalize homeless folks on Mill Avenue. We're talking about 2018, when we're talking about putting G4S private armed securities in our parks here in Tempe. You built this. This is the repercussion of your intentional decision to continue to build a violent police department in this city. Anything that comes out of this, any resolution, any policy change, will be a direct conflict to the intentional acts to build this violent police force that you have already built. I called bull on the charade that is you closing your eyes, that is the moment of silences, that is the leaning forward and the leaning back, that is the tears, that is the paying attention. It's, right? Because it's not your children. And I disagree with, you know, I respectfully disagree with my friend, that that boy was not your boy, right? That boy was a brown boy. You are not brown, right? He was shot because he is a brown boy. Your children will not be shot because they are not brown boys. And so when we talk about next steps, when we talk about accountability, when we talk about policy change, we recognize that this moment of two and a half hours is the most that you all expected to have to pay for the consequences of the decisions that you have made to get us to this point. You won't leave here and think about what you should do. Maybe you walk away and you think, what if this was my child? But it isn't your child, right? The police aren't shooting your children, right? We know the charade exists, right? How many times have drunk-ass white ASU students waved objects in the air? How many times have they thrown objects at police officers on light rail platforms, right? The officer got out of that car intent on shooting that boy, right? That was a policy decision that stems from decisions you are made, that you already made. What are you gonna do from this moment on? Who are you gonna be accountable to? I'm not asking you to do this for your children, because I recognize you don't have to, right? I'm asking you to make serious policy change, beginning with an oversight committee of citizens that has subpoena power and power to criminally charge officers. That can start, right? You have those decisions. There are members of this community that have a lot of really, really great policy decisions that you can put into practice starting now. Are you gonna listen to them? Or are you gonna walk out of this room, say you're sorry, or not say anything at all because your lawyer has instructed you that anything you say can influence the case, or may be used against you in future litigation? What are you gonna do? There are members of this community that you can listen to, who will bring you policy. Will you have the courage to do that?
Drew Sengar. And after Drew is Natalie. After Natalie is Sophia Dancel.
My name is Drew Sengar. I'm a data scientist, and I don't think I need to provide you with any data about the sentiment of the people, what they actually want, and what is being provided by the leaders of the community is not sufficient. I mainly came here not to, you know, talk about, I didn't have any desire to give any sentiment feeling about myself, but I have to. It's the type of thing that a 14-year-old kid dying, it's unhealthy for the community. As you can see, we're coming out with our anger, our negative emotions, and this leads to more policing. So I really, really hope that the police department pick up their [BLEEP]. It's needed sooner than later. That's all I have to say.
Natalie? I just haven't named Natalie. Sophia Dancel.
You didn't make that time for that person, right? The person you called before. Is there still some people who wanna speak?
Hi. My name is Sarah. I'm a PhD student at ASU, and I don't feel safe in my community. But I have an opportunity for y'all. You already know how the community feels about you. You already know that we aren't happy with you, and that we will remember this when elections come around. You already know about the long history, why communities of color don't trust you because of the actions that your government has taken against us. So what's the opportunity here? I want you to prove us wrong. Prove that you do care. Prove that you are progressive. Prove that you aren't okay with murdering kids. Prove us wrong that you care more for your community than the cops. Every time we bring up police brutality in Tempe, you keep telling us that you changed the police department, that you changed the chief of police, but we haven't seen any changes. In 2012, a report came out that said Tempe Police was more racially discriminatory than Ferguson. Well, it's 2019, and we haven't seen the updated data or any list. Based on my research, it shows nothing has changed. So prove us wrong. We already know that when we send this case to the county, Bill McGonigory, the conservative county attorney, is not going to do anything about it. He's gonna let that cop go scot-free. We already know that. And I've also heard that this is the blue dot in the red state, right? You're the progressive city, right? Because you can see here, the community is not quite convinced. So prove us wrong. Prove us that you will prosecute this cop. Don't send this case off to the Attorney General. Don't pass responsibility to anyone else you know won't do justice. Prove us wrong and do what's right.
Thank you. Sophia Dancel. And after Sophia, Manuel Angelo. You already spoke though.
Hi, I'm Sophia. I live in Phoenix. We're here for Antonio. We're here for every citizen executed by Maricopa Police. Unfortunately, it takes a child being murdered to gain attention to the gross human rights abuses perpetuated by this county's police, employed to protect and serve. This is not an isolated incident. It's systemic. The issue being Blue Lives Matter More Culture. At the end of the day, consistently, nothing changes. Why? Because you see us as separate. You see us as criminal. You see us as less than. You mentioned the point in Time Count. With rising numbers of homelessness, all you need to do is spend 15 minutes with the street resident population to know that we have a mental health crisis on our hands. Instead, they're arrested. They're considered separate. They're considered criminal. They're considered less than. But police budgets continuously increase year after year without regard to social services our community desperately needs. Once again, we are separate. We are criminal. We are less than. And now it's become custom for cops to execute citizens, to execute children without judge or jury. Dozens of people shot last year alone. Their stories, we will never know. Antonio's story, we will never have the privilege of knowing. Instead, he was painted by Tempe Police as separate, as criminal, as less than. Why? Because you guys don't truly represent us. Officer Jean was there for brief moments before deciding Antonio deserved to die. He needs to be fired. But he is one of many who believe they are above us because of the badge they wear. Why? Because they know, and the precedent has been set, the Blue Lives Matter More. It's apparent when your complexion warrants traffic stops. It's apparent when your skin color correlates to sentencing. It's apparent when simply running away equates to being a perceived threat. We need a civilian oversight board with the authority to enforce better training, reallocation of police resources, and repercussions for murderous police conducted with sincere transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Bev Cooper.
Bev Cooper? Ben, sorry.
Or Ben.
My name is Ben Cooper. I'm a resident of Tempe. I don't think that anything I could say could really sum up the community's anger and feelings better than they have already. But I just wanna personally express that I do not think that this council can fix this problem. It is a problem inherent in policing. It is a problem inherent in government. It is a problem inherent in the fact that we feel the need to punish people instead of trying to help them. When nothing that has happened was necessary, it didn't need to happen, nobody is helped by it, okay? The officer who arrived, he did not have to chase Antonio. He could have just left. If he seriously thought that his life was in danger, he can get in his car and go away. There's no reason to chase after people, okay? It's not, even if somebody had committed a crime, it does not help just to chase after them and try to put them in prison. It doesn't change any of the underlying problems. We need to focus on getting rid of the police. We need the police to not carry weapons. The fact that police are always carrying weapons when they're walking around, just like on their regular patrols, shows that they believe that the solution to these problems is violence. They show that they are willing to kill people just while they're like carrying out the regular duties of their jobs by carrying weapons. We do not need to kill people. We do not need to point guns at people, okay? Like, not, just like a few days ago, Tempe Police pointed an assault rifle at somebody who was squatting on the roof of a building, just like on Apache. It's just unbelievable. Like, what harm comes from that? Like, yeah, it might be annoying that some people do certain things we don't like, but nobody should be shot for those things. It's [BLEEP] ridiculous. I think, there's no reason to believe that any of these reforms are gonna change the underlying problems. I remember like four years ago, when people were talking about how body cameras were going to fix all these problems we have, because it would create accountability, and that's [BLEEP], okay? We have seen how the police, they, people are going to take, like, a lot of people are just gonna take their word, and there's nothing we can do about that, all right? Like, having the body camera footage isn't gonna change that. Having a civilian review board that might help get somebody indicted, but we've seen time and again that juries are willing to acquit police, prosecutors are willing to go easy on them. The problem is the police. We need to fix that problem. Get rid of them. Fire them all, okay? Get rid of the [BLEEP] police.
Excuse me. Next is Joel Ovita. And after Joel, we have Ricky Mohammed.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Mohammed. I represent a group called Thanking Out For Tomorrow, as well as a member of the Nation of Islam. And we stand in solidarity with the people, because this is one of the most arrogant, pompous, don't-give-a-damn groups I've ever seen in my life. Look at you. You've been sitting there with your hands on your chin like you're just tired, I wanna go home. You know what I'm saying? You don't even count. And, I mean, come on, man, this is ridiculous. You know, this is absolutely the worst scenario I've seen. Elected officials who say they're gonna help, and they don't give a damn, okay? This is a privileged city, okay? And they don't give a damn about nobody but who goes to ASU and their mom and daddy to send and pay three times the amount of food, I mean, three times the amount of price for anything at ASU. That's how they get paid. That's why they're sitting up here, okay? So we need to take it to the next stage if they don't write this resolution, okay? Think beyond now, because you know what they're gonna do, not a damn thing. So now we've got to mobilize and think, think. Not like other cities waiting for the same result, no matter what city it is, for them to come back and say he's acquitted, okay? No, it's time now that you understand that you can't continue this madness. I'm a black man. I know to walk through Tempe circumspect, okay? I know to pay attention to every one of your little motorcycle when I was walking up here. There's one you got upstairs right here. I looked at him like I was getting into a little crime. This is how I walk as a black man in Tempe, Arizona, because it's for the rich and the privileged, okay? I have no rights, okay? That's just reality. So I'm not even wasting my time saying you're gonna do something, I know that, okay? 61 years of living in Arizona, and this is the worst people I've ever seen on the council. Everybody, you know, do stand in solidarity. Something. Did I go writing down?
I don't see no pens up there moving. Y'all better start drafting up something. We have problems. Real concerns here. Y'all doing a damn thing.
Tanya Lopez.
What is on the agenda? We know you don't plan to have another public meeting until February 28th. That's far too damn long.
That crazy damn law. You're not going home.
What is on the agenda?
I am a family member of Antonio Arce. And I just wanted to tell you guys that today I went to go pick up his little sister, his eight-year-old sister. And she's still a police officer. And she was too scared to go by. Are we really gonna be raising our kids, telling them that they should be scared of the police officers? They shouldn't. They're supposed to protect us. It's not fair. You guys aren't doing anything. You guys haven't done anything, and we're still waiting. Why is an eight-year-old, an eight-year-old little girl supposed to be scared of an officer? It's not fair. He was a 14-year-old boy. All kids make mistakes. Does that mean that, does that mean that he had to get shot? Did the officer really have to take his life? You guys need to get together and do something. You guys haven't done anything, and we're tired of waiting. But just keep in mind that there's little kids that are running around that are scared of our officers when they should be feeling safe when they walk near one, not scared
All right, that's all the cards. Is anyone else like to speak? Can you please fill out a speaker's card, please?
Yes, I'll fill it out.
Yes.
Piri Hernandez.
I know you spoke earlier. Can you please state your name again?
Piri Hernandez. And I'm hearing and I'm seeing your faces as I'm here, and I remember, right, like, that one of the biggest threats we have is white liberals. That's one of the biggest threats we have on our lives. It's you. I've walked for you, knocked doors for you, made calls for you, all of you. In the last, since 2010 that I've been involved, all of you have profited from our work, from our sweat, from our fears, from our pain. And you get to sit up there and think you're saying progressive [BLEEP]. That's all you do. You say progressive things, you're not progressive. You go out and speak against gun violence? This is gun violence. You go out and go to the Women's March and go and speak for women. Sandra is a mother who violent has been upon at your hands. Don't march at the Women's March while you ignore the pain of Sandra. You say you speak for children. Antonio was a kid. He had just turned 14. You say your pro-education and your marching and Red for Ed and all that. You say you're pro-education and you're marching and Red for Ed and all that stuff, right? We're there too, but we actually live it. And then you try to smear the fact that Antonio was not in school. But don't condemn the fact that that school pushed him out. You had a lot of opportunities. You say you can't. You couldn't make a statement. There was a lot of opportunities for you to show up. We were out here two weeks ago. We were in the alleyway by Antonio's blood on the street. All his mom and his dad kneeled in a place where their son was killed. We were at a viewing where everyone was welcome, where you were invited to. And y'all didn't show up. You actively didn't show up. You actively don't do anything. You don't act. You can't continue to say these things that make you sound good and make you feel good and make you get the, you know, progressive cookies and do nothing. We demand the officer to be fired immediately. We demand this chief to be fired immediately. The least you can do is name the park that was right in front where this child should be playing after him. That should be Antonio Park immediately. You owe the community for the trauma that you've caused. You get to go home and you're done. They're in pain. They're crying. They've been hospitalized and now have hospital bills because of the pain and of the moments when they found that their son has been killed. And they continue to go back. You need to pay those bills. You need to pay for that funeral cost. You're harassing a witness and their family. You broke a woman's iPad or tablet, took evidence from without warrants. You let this family call the phone number, call Antonio's phone for several hours, text messages, where it said "mom" on the call. You didn't answer it. You didn't tell the mom that she can go to the hospital. Mom didn't get to say goodbye to her baby. She didn't get to go and hug him one last time because then the body was taken, and by that time it was too late for them to go to the hospital. And they had to wait until the viewing. They had to wait until they got the body back. You don't get to do this anymore. It's time to act. Where are you going to be at? What are you going to do? And so before we leave, we want to hear, "What are you going to do?" Because we already started hearing and getting messages, what are the other things you can't do? Those all sound like excuses. So what the hell are you going to do?
What do we want?
Justice!
Where do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
Where do we want it?
Now!
Amy Lynn? Amy Lynn?
What are you going to do?
What are you going to do?
I'm going to have everybody speak, and we'll have a talk. Amy Lynn? And then, can we get Victor Leon?
After the meeting is convened, you can then speak as private citizens, right? Can you guys just then speak to us after the meeting is convened?
There's hours.
Yes? He said yes, Kobe.
First off, my name's not Amy Lynn. It's Amy Liu. And first off, I just want to say, I am really proud of the community for getting together and being able to stand in solidarity with the family of Antonio. Because I hated hearing about Dalvin Holland's years back, and I hated hearing about Antonio's murder. And the pain that his family must feel is insurmountable, and you can never get that back. You can never get his life back, and you've taken away the life and the happiness of a family. And yet, y'all still try to demonize him and try to justify this murder. You try to pin him as this burglar. You try to pin him as all these different things and this criminal, but he was just a kid. And we all know that. And one thing is that blue lives don't exist. Y'all get to take off your badge at the end of the day, but black and brown people, they're black and brown 24/7, 365 days a week for the rest of their [BLEEP] lives. And you get to go home to your kids, and you get to say goodbye and goodnight every single night. And yet, these people are living in fear until the system changes, until something happens. And innocent people are killed, are jailed, when in reality, they just need help. And especially, a 14-year-old boy should never be seen as a criminal. And Sylvia, you are one of the biggest cowards I have ever seen in my entire life. Like, hiding behind your desk, hiding behind Twitter, and all that other [BLEEP]. And like, being able to justify all this [BLEEP]. And like, we demand that you be fired, that the officer be fired, and that all of you do something about this before this happens again, because we cannot see these numbers keep rising. We need, yeah.
I am. Notes?
We see this anger, and we're here because we're angry, but we're also here out of love for the community and for the family. And together, we're standing. And together, we're demanding change, and if y'all don't give it to us, we're going to take it.
Thank you. Victor Leon?
Hi, I'm Victor Leon. I'm from Phoenix. And I just needed to say that you guys are doing a whole good job at everything that you guys are... Like, Antonio is only a little bit younger than I am, and already I'm seeing that you guys don't give a [BLEEP] about him. Because I go to some of the schools that are far down in Phoenix that are rated some of the worst schools. And you want to know what? Like, even then, I'm not scared of them. You want to know why? You want to know why? Because I know that underneath all that, there's just a normal person. A normal person that can get messed up in some easy ways. All that you're giving them is just a bunch of weapons so that they can go and start hurting people, so that they can feel confident. But in reality, they don't need that. What you need to do is you need to start putting more money into the schools and start telling people to actually start putting effort into their students. Like, I go to school every day. Ain't nobody ever asked me how I'm feeling or what's going on. There's no counselors at my school. All that I have to deal with is a bunch of anger that builds up. Like, right now, I'm holding in a lot of anger. I've been holding in a lot of tears. I'm bipolar. So right now, I could go crazy out of nowhere, and they'd have to stop me. And I've gone to MMA, so I'm pretty sure I can get him on the ground before he can get me on the ground. And then he'd have to go over here and call his little friend, and then one of the ones up there would have to call. So you guys really do need to consider what you guys are doing, and you need to start doing something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Now!
How about that resolution?
So what are you guys going to do?
Okay, I want to, I do want to thank you guys, everyone, for coming.
No more halities. Tell us what you're doing.
No, we're listening to you. Trust me. We are very engaged with listening to you. Okay, well, I can, I'm trying, okay? We care about you guys. We care about what your voices are. We've been sitting here and listening to you. That's what we do. We want to listen to you. State law does prohibit us from speaking, responding to stuff that is not scheduled on the agenda.
State law says you can't murder a 14-year-old child?
State law states that. Now, I will tell you, we are looking, and I know, you know, this is, as I've stated before, this is a very unfortunate situation. And my condolences are, it's bad. It's not good. Trust me. I'm a father of children, just like a lot of you in this room. I will be honest with you. We are here to listen to you. We care about what you're saying, and we want justice like you all do. Let me tell you.
Justice!
So with that, we want to thank you. We want to thank you for coming. We listened to all of you. So thank you.